You on the last air?
Yeah.
I've been, the last couple of times I've flown that I've been very disappointed.
Yeah, I've had better experiences.
And, um, I, I am still going out with my sword and doing what I can set up. And asking airlines the price of like $300 more. Double airline is insane.
I'd like to call the regular planning commission meeting of August 10th order at 6:00 PM. Will the clerk please take roll?
Commissioner Seals?
Present.
Commissioner Sajel?
Present.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Here.
Commissioner Rubio is absent and excused.
All right, Mr. Giddings, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I get going too far, is there anybody online?
Michael Schwartz from Bridge Horton Business and Chero.
Welcome, Mr. Schwartz.
Good evening.
All right, we're gonna move on to approval of the agenda. Does the commission have any adjustments to tonight's meeting agenda? If the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda, such as the minutes, they need to be pulled out and put under new business. Hearing no changes to the agenda, the agenda will stand as presented. We'll go to reports, and do we have reports from the, the city deputy administrator? Moving on, uh, to, oh.
Thank you. I just wanted to give everybody a little update on what we're doing as it contains the business and policies.
And Mrs.?
We've had 80 new.
Ms. Nygaard, could you introduce yourself for us?
Yes, my name is Crystal Nygaard. I'm the deputy administrator. I come from, from the back of the department. So, the general theme of this administration is we are open for business and we're seeing some advantages of our intentional recruiting from our neighbors. We've seen 80 new business licenses that have been issued since early June. We've done six ribbon cuttings for businesses within the city, which includes a couple restaurants, a child learning center, Sea Salt Case in Alaska, New Credit Union, and my house is doing a new project. The mayor has been to the Alaska Military Youth Academy to ask for good graduation and has been presenting the worst employee anniversary acknowledgements. We had 54 floats in the parade this year, and we were, uh, we awarded the first prize to Churchill Rock. Second was Senate candidate Tabaka, and third was the horse nails. Where are we going? We are really focused on automating a lot of systems within the city, and we have just announced our first economic summit, which is planned in the spring of 2022, and that would be a collective effort for us to showcase all of our facilities and allow business and industry to showcase what the trends and what they're working on in their field of expertise. Some policies that we're working on is we passed a resolution in opposition of this 1.5% area-wide borough sales tax that they've been talking about, and we have been working with our representatives on the alcohol, a new alcohol bill to allow local control. It helps, really help our restaurants, uh, as they do out here. If you want more detail, let me know, and I have a full report for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Public Works Director.
Thank you. Archie Giddings here. A few projects that are underway. Uh, we've been, started our strip paving, uh, which is gonna be an annual thing, uh, with our additional sales tax that we gained when the police station was approved. So, we paved Success, Ashford, and Ridgewood up around Spruce and Church. Um, we're working on Kimberly and Southway next, and then there's a few more roads on that list. Uh, so that's, that's making things black and making the dust go away. And we're doing some pavement maintenance at the airport runway this week, uh, crack repairs and crack sealing. Uh, so that's, uh, slowed down aviation a little bit, but we're gonna get through it and, uh, have that pavement last longer. And lastly, we just awarded a contract, uh, K&amp;H, to bring in some gravel, some screen gravel to improve the trail at Bump's Ballfields, and that's for the Wasilla Cross Country Team to have a, a hard, dry surface to run on, even if it rains.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. City Attorney.
I think we're at this time, Chris, you're with him.
And C.
Um, for the record, Tina Crawford, city planner. So, um, just an upcoming project to let you know, a project that we started and one that'll be coming to the planning commission. Um, we did a downtown parking study for a small area of, within the downtown overlay, and what we'll be bringing back probably over the winter is looking at revising the parking calculations for downtown, looking to see if there's, if they need to follow the typical parking regulations that are in the rest of the city, and also, um, some options for payment in lieu of, um, expansion of city parking lots, creation of new ones, and just kinda looking at that area as a whole. It was one of the things during the downtown overlay that we did not address, was parking, so, um, we'll be finishing up that study and then we'll be, uh, bringing that conversation to the commission.
All right.
That's all that I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna begin our public participation, um, of the meeting. Anyone wishing to step forward and discuss anything that is not on the agenda tonight, um, now would be a good time to do so. This is, uh, time, if you want us, we're gonna go into committee of the whole a little bit later this evening and, uh, and discuss a little bit about the, um, landscaping, um, covenants for our industrial. We're finally, um, gonna put those together and push them towards a public hearing this next month. I am going to open, um, with the other commissioners' consent, um, comment during the, um, committee of the whole, um, because I don't think we're gonna have too many people here, and, uh, but it would be nice if there are people that want, wish to speak on those things at that time. It will be a good time. If you have, if you wish to speak about anything else at this time, now would be appropriate. All right. With no one stepping forward, the next item on the business is the consent agenda. I'll need a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Seals, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Sajel, second.
All right. It's been, uh, moved and seconded. Is there any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved as presented. We'll begin our new business. Ms. Crawford, would you please introduce item number one and provide your staff report?
Um, sure. Again, for the record, Tina Crawford, city planner. Um, the first item on the agenda tonight is conditional use number 21-04 with its associated resolution 21-06. The applicant is Greg Persinger with PWH Ridge Retail LLC. Um, the property is currently still in ownership by Steam LLC, but it, it's my understanding it's under purchase, and they've authorized them to move forward with a request. The request is approval to build a 5,000-square-foot commercial building with outdoor dining available for, um, each, there are two spaces within that building. Outdoor dining would be available for both of those units. The property is located at 1080 East Steam Commons Avenue. It's on unit three of the Steam Commons condominium plat. It's approximately 1.03 acres. It's zoned commercial with a generally commercial and business future land use. The surrounding zoning is commercial to the northeast and west with rural residential and commercial to the south. So, in your package, beginning on page seven, you have the staff report, and that's where all of the general approval criteria findings, um, that staff have prepared are included in there. They're also duplicated in the resolution, the draft resolution that's on page 131 in your package. Rather than go through each of the individual criteria, I'll just say that substantively they're, they're consistent with the criteria. There are a few things, though, that need some minor adjustments, and those, they're amendments to the site plan and also to the landscape plan, and then there's some other general conditions of approval. With the adoption of these conditions of approval, the project will meet all of the general approval criteria, therefore staff's recommending approval with these conditions. Um, if you want to look in your package, uh, starting on page 15, you have an aerial map showing you where the property is located. It, the highlighted area is the entire parcel. It's at the northwest corner of Robertson, East Palmer, Wasilla Highway Extension near the Home Depot. Then you have your zoning map, and you have the site plan, landscape plan in 11x17s to show you what that, that site would look like. And then, in the rest of the package, you have the applicant's information. And what I'd, what I'd rather do is just focus on the conditions of approval for this conditional use, and I'll just read those into the record. The first one states that the development must be consistent with the site plan and elevation drawings attached to the resolution as updated to address the conditions of approval below. Any revisions have to be submitted for review and approval, and substantial modifications require an amended conditional use permit application with planning commission review. The second condition is that they provide the required survey for unit three. That's a requirement of a site plan. Um, the third one is to submit an updated site plan prior to vertical construction that provides the onsite drainage and retention areas required in the code, that it has the snow storage calculations, the parking calculations, and an overall plan of the entire, um, lot that identifies where unit three is located, including the required extension and construction of the private easement to the western lot line, um, and the dedication of a 60-foot-wide public right-of-way and construction of a public road connecting the private easement to the Palmer-Wasilla Highway Extension. The road has to be to city standards. Number four is that prior to commencement of use, the site improvements must be in place as required in the traffic impact analysis dated July 7, 2021, and anything that applies out of the addendum dated July 16, 2021. Condition five is to submit the required clearing and grading plan. Number six is to submit the updated landscape plans prior to vertical construction that address the following requirements in the landscape chapter: to label the dimension and areas of the landscaped areas, provide the plant diversity, indicate vegetative mulch in the perimeter planting beds, and provides a hedge along the eastern perimeter of the parking lot extending from the southern boundary to the first landscape island to the north. The hedge must be a minimum of three feet tall at time of planting. Number seven is landscaping and landscaping structural requirements must be installed consistent with the landscaping chapter. Number eight is that they submit the required landscape guarantee prior to vertical construction. Number nine is that they must obtain fire marshal approval. Number 10 is that the applicant must obtain the proper water and sewer permits with the city public works department. Number 11 is that the signage must be reviewed and approved, um, with a sign permit. And the last one is that an as-built survey must be submitted to the planning department after completion of the building. So, one of the things that, um, is, the, the only condition I think that maybe is not clear in the drawings because it's not included in this particular package is the required driveway connection. So, if you look at your zoning map on page 16, it has overlaid on it the units, and it also shows, um, a private easement running along the north side of the lot. So, because of the number of trips that are gonna be generated on this lot, it requires these kind of improvements, and that's their conditions out of the tram, traffic impact analysis. So, currently, there already is a private road driveway going across the northern lot line. They're gonna be required to extend it all the way over to the western lot line where it says D10. That would be that western lot line. Then, north-south along that western lot line, it'll actually be a 60-foot-wide right-of-way that's dedicated with the city road constructed in there to provide a secondary access for that lot. So, because it's a condominium lot, it's, uh, it's still treated as one lot and has to address the trips and the signage and all of that as a whole, but this map shows you where those units are. Um, this particular site plan doesn't show that, that roadway. The next petition actually has it included in theirs, if you wanted to look in there. But I, most of the conditions are minor. They're just things that due to the, the short timeframe that we have for submitting a conditional use, um, they can easily be worked through, and the conditions of approval will make them consistent with the code. So, unless you have any questions, that's, um, all that I have.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions at this time?
None at this time.
None at this time.
All right. And at this point in time, um, I will invite the applicant. Please come up and make a presentation. Is there anybody here?
Marie Hulse, Corvus Design. I'm the landscape architect for the project. Um, the architect was planning on being here. He might be stuck in traffic, so I will represent the project.
Okay.
The architect and I and the owner have gone through the conditions, and we are in agreement with them. Uh, we were just coordinating with the civil plan, or the civil engineer on some of the drainage questions. Um, so those plans will be resubmitted to the planner shortly, as soon as we can get some clarification from the civil engineer.
Okay. So, at this point in time, um, that, we'll make it short and sweet.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna open it up to public testimony. If there's anybody that speaks for or against and that you need to rebut, you can come back up, speak again. Maybe the architect will be here at that point in time, and then if the commissioners have any questions, that's when we would actually bring them forward. So, the public comment portion of the public hearing is now open for conditional use permit 12104, excuse me, 2104. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? You'll have five minutes to provide your comments. Please write your name and contact information on the sign-up sheet. State your name for the record and whether or not you, please, if, whether or not you live in the city limits. All right. With no audience comments, the public comment portion of this hearing is closed. Does the applicant have anything else that they would deem necessary? All right. I'm gonna close, uh, the, um, that portion of the hearing. Um, at this point in time, I'll need a motion to either approve or deny the conditional use permit 2104.
Commissioner Seals, I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Sajel, second.
Okay. And?
No, they should read it in.
As part of your motion, could you please, um, state what we are approving, like the, the title of the, the whole resolution?
Commissioner Seals, Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 2106, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission approving the commission, conditional use permit number 2104 to build a 5,000-square-foot commercial building with outdoor dining located on unit three Steam Commons condominium plat.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sajel, second.
Okay. You have a motion, second. Any discussion? No?
No.
Okay.
None at this time.
So, I just get to speak? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then, uh, I will call for the, the vote. Uh, there's the three of us. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution Number Serial, Serial Number, uh... The Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 21-06, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission approving a conditional use permit to build, use permit 2104 to build a 5,000-square-foot commercial building with outdoor dining located at unit three Steam Commons condominium plat is approved. Is the, uh, architect here for the, the second portion, too?
The second item has a different.
Different one. Okay. All right. Just trying to decide whether I need to move something or not. All right. Uh, Ms. Crawford, would you like to introduce item number two?
Sure.
Your staff report.
The second item, for the record, Tina Crawford, city planner. The second item is conditional use number 21-05 with its associated resolution 21-07. The applicant is Pat Eater with the design company. The owner is Steam LLC. The request is approval to build a 5,748-square-foot Three Bearers Market with a 10-pump gas station. The lot area is approximately 1.33 acres. It's located at 1150 East Steam Commons Avenue. It's unit one of the Steam Commons condominium plat. Um, the property is zoned commercial, um, to the nor, it's zoned commercial with a generally commercial and business future land use. It has commercial zoning to the northeast and west and rural residential and commercial to the south. Again, in this package, beginning on page 149, you have the staff report. Then you have, and what it does is, again, contains all the general approval criteria with the findings of fact that the commissioner required to find that their, uh, the application is consistent with. Staff finds that with the proposed conditions of approval, the application is consistent, um, with the general approval criteria. Before, I, I'll read those into the record, but before I do that, I wanted to find you the map that I was referring to that showed you the proposed, or the required roadway connection.
Is that on, uh, one, like, 58? This one?
No, it's not shown on that one. So, we'll see. I apologize. I did not pull that one out. I may have misspoken, but it is shown in there. Um, but on page 174, on the 11x17s, you'll see the bulk of that condominium plat. Units, at least units one through five are shown, but you can see where that non-exclusive road easement goes along the north side. That'll be extended to the western boundary, and then a 60-foot ri, 60-foot-wide right-of-way will extend, will be constructed, um, going north and south to provide a secondary access. So, I guess there wasn't a drawing in there. It must've been something that, um, I viewed during one of the other meetings. So, the, in your package in the resolution, the, it's on, starts on 279, and the conditions of approval on 280, so I'll just read those briefly into the record. The first one is, again, that the development must be consistent with the site plan and elevation drawings attached to the resolution as exhibit B as updated to address the conditions of approval below. Second condition is to provide the survey for unit one. The third condition is to provide an updated site plan prior to construction that provides the onsite drainage and retention areas. Number four is that they submit the required grading and clearing plan. Number five is smittle of an updated landscape plan that labels the dimension and area of the landscaped areas, adds a six-foot-tall opaque fence to screen the RV dump and propane tank, um, so that there'll be fence and, and shrubs along the right-of-way, and, um, adds the plantings required in chapter 16.33 to the grassy areas abutting the northeast corner of the building. That has to deal with the blank facade of the, the building that faces Roberts. The sixth condition is that the landscaping and landscaping structural requirements be installed consistent with the landscaping chapter. Number seven is that they submit a revised bu, building elevation that incorporates architectural detail to the substantially blank facade on the east side of the building facing Roberts Street, um, to incorporate features that are included on the west side, which is the entrance and the south sides of the building. Number eight is to submit the required landscape guarantee prior to construction. Number nine is prior to commencement of use. The site improvements required as part of the traffic impact analysis dated July 7, 2021 must be in place. The tenth one is that the fire, borough fire marshal must review the, the proposal for compliance with fire codes and building codes. Number 11, that the applicant must coordinate with Public Works for water and sewer connections. Number 12 is signage must be reviewed separately with a sign permit, and number 13, that after construction and as-built survey must be submitted to the planning department. So, the, there are two things that are, um, not part of every review that the planning commission has. The code states that any additional criteria can be added if felt that it's necessary to be consistent with the intent of the code. So, if you look at the landscape plan on page 175, um, you can see, actually, you can see it on the site plan, too. Um, they're proposing an, an LP tank and then an RV dumps. So, the requirement to put a fence and landscaping, um, incorporates part of the requirements that are there for mechanical equipment in the code, but because this is right along the Palmer-Wasilla Highway Extension, and that is the major frontage there, staff is requesting that they do that additional buffering and screening of those particular facilities. Um, it's, it's a minor change. Certainly, the applicant can speak to that as to whether it's an issue, um, but that is an additional one. And then, if you look in your package, at the elevation drawings, they're on page 180. It's an 11x17 pullout. You can see the one that says Sea Store East. That particular elevation, the one to the north, which is number two, says Sea Store North. Um, that one doesn't face, does not, that facade of the building does not front a road, therefore, it's not subject to the blank facade provisions of the code. However, the one that's, has the one in a circle and says Sea-Dash Store East, that one faces, that's the side of the building that faces Roberts Road. So, when you take this drawing and you pull out either the landscape plan or the site plan that shows you how that building is situated, there's, the parking abuts the building on the eastern side, so there's nowhere to put the landscaping that's required to break up that facade, um, since it's substantially blank. So, what the request is, is that they incorporate some of these features that are on the south and the west elevations onto that east side, and that in the landscape island that's in that northeast corner of the lot, on that northeast corner of the building, and that little landscaped area. Kind of hard to explain this way, but if you're looking on page 175, and this is the building here, there's a landscape island here plus a grassed area right beside the building. So, what the condition of approval says is that in that grassed area next to the building that they put the required plantings for blank facades. So, they don't meet the entire thing, but with the incorporation of some of the architectural details and that li, that landscaping. details and that, that landscaping, then it would be consistent with that section dealing with blank facades. So, maybe a little confusing, I'd be happy to explain it a little more. Those are the two conditions that you haven't seen in recent applications. And with that, I don't have anything else to add, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then, the applicant is also here.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions at this point in time for the planner?
Yes, Commissioner Sajil. So just, so the only access will be either off of South Roberts or the road that's gonna be going in on the west side?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Seals, no questions at this time.
The road, I have, this is Commissioner Bushnell, but the planned road on the western side, do we have a map that, we didn't have a map in here that really shows it?
No, but if you look in your package, 157, that's your aerial, and so the blue is the boundary. It highlights the entire parcel. So it's that western lot line, so where the heavy blue line is, that's where your, that north-south 60-foot wide right-of-way would be placed.
And that's gonna connect into the?
That private easement that goes, yes. So the private easement will extend all the way across the northern lot line, then there'll be an actual dedicated 60-foot wide public right-of-way there.
And there'll be?
That'll be constructed, that they will construct, that will give another access point to the Palmer Wasilla, and I believe at some point in the future, a median cut would be allowed?
So, we consulted with the state on this, obviously, it's their road, and this first step, glorified driveway approach for, for the project. There's another project in the future to the north that abuts this, and the state would concede, so this is intermediate spacing between, between the existing signal at Roberts and a possible future signal at Glenwood. This is a midpoint. They would concede a median break if it serves more than one development, that is, to make a, a left-hand turn bay coming in. So, as this parcel develops out, and they dedicate that to the public, the state's gonna allow them to make that left-hand turn bay, and so other people can use that approach as development continues in the area.
Okay, 'cause there's two developments in there now.
Well, just on this part.
One exist, or two existing and, and one, a third, now this new one.
And then there's a whole other set of development that's coming in behind them.
Right.
That's the one, you know, that gets the benefit that they're willing to concede the median cut.
Okay.
If both developments can use it.
So it's actually the two large tracks to the north, the reason that that turns into a public road. And then, the one to the west also will have access.
Okay. All righty, any other questions?
Yeah, I had one more. So, access into these individual businesses will be just that east-west road?
Correct, all of that private easement.
Okay, all right.
All right. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation at this time?
So, if you wanted to see it, oh, so it's in a small version. It's actually, I guess, in the TIA, it's where that drawing is. So on page 288 in your package, you can see that connection, that roadway connection. It's a little small, but shows you how the private easement extends across the north and then the right-of-way.
Okay.
Yep?
Yep.
Hello, I'm Pat Eater with the Design Company. This is a fairly complicated project, 'cause I'm an architect and I have done the site plan for this, but I haven't designed the Three Bears Market. That's another architect who did that. Last year, we had an approval on the car wash that's adjacent to this. They kind of worked together.
Midas?
It's a Sudsy Salmon car wash. It was approved last fall, but they didn't, they decided to hold off and begin construction when this one started. And they work together fairly well. Three Bears Market, it's almost 6,000 square feet. It's a small supermarket. And then there's a 10-pump fuel canopy with this. It's very similar to the one in Palmer, if you've seen that on Arctic Avenue at the Glen Highway. They have the car wash, the market and the gas pumps. The, the conditions that we saw here, the civil engineer was kind of tied up at this time, so he wasn't able to get on addressing these three or four items that were in here, but he'd be getting that done soon. And the, the blank facade, we will be working on that, and we'll get that worked out with Tina for the approval on, on that. And then there's a few more landscaping requirements that, that popped up, the six-foot of tall opaque fences at the RV dump and the propane tank. Those were kind of new, but there's no problem putting those in. Everything else is pretty standard. Probably the hardest thing on this has been the traffic impact analysis that we had to go through with DOT, and so that took almost a year, so what they had hoped to put in last year, they're hoping to get going on this year, so. Are there any questions?
If we have any questions, we'll do that in your second allotted time. We'll see if there's any, I, I don't think you're gonna have to go very far. We'll see if there's anybody that wants to speak for or against the proposal, and then bring you back up. The public portion of the public hearing is now open for conditional use permit 21-05. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? You have five minutes to provide your comments. With no one wishing to speak, the public comment portion of the public hearing is now closed. With no other audience comments, okay, does applicant have anything else for us, or do any of the commission members have any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Sajil, no questions.
Questions?
Commissioner Seals, no questions.
And I do not have any questions. All right, then, at this point in time, I need a motion to either approve or deny conditional use permit 21-05, Resolution serial number 21-07.
Commissioner Seals, Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution serial number 2107, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission approving the conditional use permit number 2105 to build a 5,748 square foot three-bears market with a 10-pump gas station located on Unit 1 Steam Commons condominium plat. I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Sajil second.
All right, motion has been made and been seconded. Discussion. Commissioner Seals, you, you made the motion to approve?
I have no discussion at this time.
Commissioner Sajil, no discussion.
I would like to make a note, if I remember right, there was one letter that came back about developments in this, I don't know if it was this one or if it was the other one, just talking about the traffic.
It was in both of them.
Yeah, and, and I know that intersection gets a, a lot of traffic, so the fact that the other road is being made and there'll be at least a, a left-right, or depending on, out, be able to go out there away from the stoplight should help mitigate traffic in the near term, but then it'll probably develop far past what we expect in the next 10 years, and it will look completely different as, I'm assuming, as more larger commercial developments come into the area. So, you guys ready to vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, appears that it passes. The Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution serial number 21-07, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission approving conditional use permit number 2105 to build a 5,748 square foot three-bears market with a 10-pump gas station located at Unit 1. Steam Condom, Steam Commons condominium plat is approved. Mr. Crawford, would you like to introduce item number three?
Certainly. Again, for the record, Tina Crawford, City Planner. Item number three is conditional use permit number 21-06 with the associated resolution 21-08. The applicant is Tim Alley with the Boote Company. The owner is Nanaz Properties Wasilla. The request is for approval to build a 10,500 square foot restaurant with outdoor dining and an entertainment area for special events. The lot area is approximately 4.48 acres. It's located at 3,001 East Sun Mountain Avenue, Track 3A Pioneer Overlook Resubdivision. Property is zone commercial. It has R1 zoning to the north and commercial zoning to the southeast and west, and it has a generally commercial and business future land use. So in your package, starting on 297, you have, again, the staff report with the general approval criteria and the findings, staff's findings. Again, in summary, staff finds that with the proposed conditions of approval, it meets the general approval criteria and therefore recommending approval with those conditions. In your package, you also have the map on page 305 with the site plan, and the landscape plan there is an 11 by 17. Then you have the full set of plans and maps in the package, beginning on 317. The resolution is in the package, beginning on page 343. One thing I do want to call out that's unique about this, and I'm actually glad to see a, a business actually address this in the beginning instead of dealing with it on a recurring basis. In your site plan on page 318, you have that, you can see one of the versions of the site plan. So, along East Sun Mountain area, that area is indicated as grass, and it has a stage shown. This request will approve them to be able to have events, outside events, without coming to the city for temporary use permit approval for every single event. They have adequate onsite parking to deal with these type of events. This is a large enough site. That area directs toward the highway and toward the commercial uses to the south, which is good because you have the residential to the north, so therefore, they're not putting it at the back of the property, they're putting it at the front to minimize those impacts.
I thought it was laid out the other way.
No, so this one is actually.
I was expecting a house full of people.
No. So, so they actually did it that way, and then the outdoor dining, just as with the other, the first approval we dealt with, I didn't call that one out, but they're specifically addressing outdoor dining, have addressed the parking requirements for that, so it's something that they can use or not use as, as the weather permits. So right now, for all of the older buildings that we have, they have to come in and ask for temporary use permit approval to do these for six months or less. This one is setting themselves up right, planning and taking it all into account. So I think that's, that'll be a great asset, and it's good that they, they took into account minimizing those negative impacts on the neighbors to the north.
Which page was that?
Oh, I just put it back.
518.
518, thank you.
318.
318.
Oh, 308 of 518, sorry, 308 of 518.
Yeah. 318 of 518 is.
Yeah, it's 318.
So, yeah, the, the drawing is actually turned sideways. If you turned it longways, with the north arrow pointing up, the residential's on the north side, Sun Mountain and the Parks Highway's on the south side. And so that entertainment area is on the south side next to the Parks Highway and the frontage road. So, the only other thing that I'll do is, in your resolution, again, you have conditions of approval. The first one is that the development must be consistent with the site plan and elevation drawings as amended to address the conditions of approval. Revisions have to be reviewed and substantial ones come back to the Planning Commission. The second one is that they submit an updated site plan that addresses the requirement for curbs or structural barriers around the landscape parking islands, 25-foot drive aisles in the southern portion of the parking area, a 20-foot length for the handicap space, labels the building dimensions, sidewalk, and then provides a sidewalk connection between the pathway along East Sun Mountain to the restaurant, and shows ground-level mechanical and electrical equipment with appropriate screening. The third one is, because of the number of parking spaces, they are required to provide cut sheets and a parking lot plan, so that's something they can easily resolve, but it does need to be submitted. That's the third condition. The fourth one is to submit the clearing and grading plan. The fifth one deals with an updated landscape plan to label the dimensions of the areas, provide the decorative fencing, and provide the correct square footage for the parking lot landscaping. And there was a note on the landscape plan that stated that that portion of the landscape was optional, but actually is part of the 15% that's required, so to remove that note. The sixth one is that the landscaping and landscaping structural requirements be installed consistent with the landscape chapter. Number seven is that the Matsu Borough Fire Chief reviews the proposal for compliance with building codes and fire codes. Number eight, that they, the applicant coordinate with Public Works for water and sewer connections. Number nine, that signage has to be reviewed and approved via sign permit. And number 10, an as-built survey submitted after completion of the building. So again, none of these are significant revisions, these are just things that need to be worked through and can be done prior to them beginning vertical construction. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Was there anything submitted in the packet I didn't see it that addresses access onto the Parks Highway and, and overall traffic flow into that area?
Oh, are you talking?
They're a little bit removed from, from Herman Road, but still, they're gonna impact Herman Road.
This particular one?
Yeah, no, we reached out to DOT to get their input, whether TIA would be needed, and, and they declined to have them do that. They recognize we're, we're working on some long-range plans for the area, but this one building isn't gonna trigger anything.
Okay, all right, 'cause that area's tough.
Yeah.
It's very tough. All right. Okay, any other questions for the City Planner?
No questions.
No questions at this time.
All right, would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation at this time? I was expecting Lucinda with some jimmies.
I should've had something, I think, when I was in here last time, with Krispy Kreme. Yeah, he brought a couple dozen doughnuts. I'll talk to somebody about that.
Great expectations here.
My name's Tim Alley, I'm with the Boote Company. I have the opportunity to present this, this project to you. The more I've worked on this, the cooler this project's become, and I found some, out some more background information from the contractor we're working with, and, and this has been a dream of the family for a while, so, you know, for, for over 30 years, Chappos has been serving the finest Mexican food in, in the valley here, and also in Eagle River, and been doing, doing pretty well with their, their thirst-quenching margaritas as well. But... But their customers are their most important people and top priority to their success. And they found that their current location, they're just, it's just too small and they want to grow and they want to build. What they've told us is, you know, they want to have the nicest restaurant in Alaska if they can. Of course, you know, there's limitations to that for budgets and whatnot, but they, what we have put together between TBC and Rim Architects, it is shaping up to be pretty nice. They have some big plans for the site, such as the concert venue there. They're also, which this isn't included in this permit package, but is a long-term, so to speak, plan for them to put, also have a temporary, possible temporary shelter up front to have more of a venue for catered events, such as maybe weddings or something like that, depending on the interests. So that will be coming forward later, but it is in their kind of long-range plan, so to speak. As seen as said, there is also some outdoor seating up front that, we had to cut that back a little bit due to some budget things, but eventually, they'd like to expand that out a little bit further as well. And again, that'll be in a further, another planning meeting, I'm sure. But ultimately, yeah, this is, you know, going to be a Spanish-Mexican-type design, as you can see from the elevations provided. Pretty nice-looking, in my opinion. And, yeah, we're looking forward to getting going on it. We've reviewed all the conditions. I think one, the only condition that we would like to discuss is the pathway connection. It's not a huge thing, but there's not a whole lot of, like, similar businesses in the area. I don't think that they're going to see a lot of pedestrian use up to the restaurant. And it honestly would, yeah, take some money to build and pull it from other places. Also, looking at kind of the neighboring, like Lithia just expanded their parking lot, and I don't know the particulars for a car company, but they don't have, you know, pathway access or anything off of that, as far as I can tell. So just kind of looking at the area and how people will be coming to it, I think where it is off of Sun Mountain, kind of towards the end there, doesn't really lend itself to access by, you know, by walking, but... So I just like to bring that up as a consideration for possibly not putting that on the, as a condition of approval.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Well, we'll open it up to public testimony. We'll see if anybody comes in.
I'm sorry, I do have one thing to add.
Sure.
I did have a resident behind the project asking about the concerts. And then the Geppetto did answer that they don't intend that those concerts go beyond 10:00 p.m. So I know that the resident I talked to said that the bowling alley had had concerts in the past that went into late hours of night, 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, made a lot of racket in the neighborhood. And the Chebbo's family does not have any any need to, or any desire to cause that kind of noise issue.
I was going to say, they had one the other night. I think it shut down right at midnight is when they shut, that was last noise.
With that, I'm done.
Okay. So we're going to, we have to take an emergency three-minute recess at 6:53. Pardon the interruption? All right, I'm going to come back on the record at 6:55. And at this point in time, public comment portion of public hearing is now open for conditional permit 2106. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the side? We have five minutes. With no one wishing to speak, the public comment portion of this public hearing is now closed. Does the applicant have anything else that they wish to add at this point in time? Okay. Do any of the commission members have any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Seals, none at this time.
Commissioner Sajil, no questions.
Okay. I will have one question if you could come back up. So Commissioner Bushnell here. The question is, is you're asking us to eliminate 2E, which is the sidewalk connection between pathway along, the pathway that's on East Sun Mountain. So it'd be the walk-in access from the street to the property, which would seem like a normal thing, especially as that area develops and becomes bigger. I understand that it's, is there a really good reason from your guys' standpoint besides money?
Not really, I suppose, yeah.
I mean, I understand that at this point in time, there's anything where it's going, but as the next lot develops and the next one develops and everything else develops in that area,
Right.
it's about the connected infrastructure, and we get a lot of people pushing back on us
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
about lack of connected infrastructure.
I guess my thought is there, and I would, I guess I'll open myself up a little bit here, but there's, with having a pathway connection, the existing pathway is across Sun Mountain from our lot. So we'd have to either put either a mid-block crosswalk or extend the pathway all the way over the adjacent intersection and trying to get to where the, because eventually, the pathway does cross back over. Now, that long of an extension is going to be even that much bigger of a burden.
Commissioner, sorry, City Planner, are you paying attention to this?
I was actually going to share the same information with you.
Okay.
So about the pathway being on the
Other side.
So that's what I was going to say. That was an oversight on my part, so then, as a planner, I would support striking that
Okay.
as a requirement. If it were, it was my understanding it was on that side, so
Okay.
I apologize for that. So with that being on the other side, there's, there was no recommendation at this point to have that connection.
Okay. All right. I still want it. It's not up to me. It's not about what I want. All right. Since there is no other testament, did the other commission members have any other questions after that?
None at this time.
No questions.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 21-08, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission approving conditional use permit number 2106 to construct a 10,500-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining and an entertainment area for special events located on Track 3A Pioneer Overlook RSB. I make a motion to accept.
Commissioner Sajil, second.
All right, there's been a motion to approve and a second, and I would like to make an amendment to the conditions. My motion is to strike number 2E as an echo and remove the statement that says sidewalk connection between pathway along East Sun Mountain Avenue to the restaurant. And then subsequent "and" would be stricken from this document. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment to the motion?
None at this time.
None.
All right. Anybody opposed to the amendment to the motion? Hearing no opposition, the amendment to the motion is approved.
He said strike "and," but you have a G afterwards, so why would you strike the "and"? Well, it needs to be between D and now the new E.
Mr. Chair, any kind of tweaking we have to do from a grammatical standpoint,
Standpoint.
we can do that.
Okay.
So we'll look at that when we get that to you. The other thing the commission needs to amend is the finding in the resolution on page 349 under criteria number 16.
349, 16, dash 1, 6, dot 05, number 16?
Yes.
Okay.
And so you could, it could be as easy as striking what's there and adding the word "this." No sidewalk is necessary, or no connection to the pathway is necessary since the pathway is on the south side of the Frontage Road.
Okay.
Or something to that effect. Or you could just say that this criterion is not applicable. Depending on how clear, I would recommend clarity, but...
I will, I am a man of clarity. I wear glasses, so I can see things. All right, I'm going to make a second motion to the amendment. This motion is to strike the criteria 16 dot 1, 6, dot 0, 5, 0, 16 in parentheses.
I mean, the finding?
The finding. The finding for this section. We're striking the fact that it is, we're finding that is not applicable as that the walkway is on the far side of the street, thus cannot link it.
Commissioner Seals, I second.
Any discussion?
None.
Are the commissioners clear on what the amendment is, and is the city clerk? Clear on the, okay. All right, anybody opposed? Hearing none, the second motion is, or second amendment to the motion is approved. Any discussion on the full motion as amended?
None at this time.
All right. Then at this point in time, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 21-08, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission approving a conditional use permit number 2106 to construct a 10,500-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining and an entertainment area for special events located on Track 3A Pioneer Overlook Resubdivided as amended is approved. All right. Moving on, Ms. Crawford, would you like to introduce item number four?
Certainly. Item number four is Resolution Serial Number 21-09. It's a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission, supporting a recommendation by the Wasilla Parks and Recreation Commission, their Resolution Number 21-02, to be presented to the Wasilla City Council regarding development of a static archery range in the eastern corner of Lake Lucille Park by the Alaska Bow Hunters Association. The park is located on Lot B1, Section 16, Township 17, North, Range 1, West of Surmeridian. So the code requires that any recommendations that come out of the Parks and Rec Commission come through the Planning Commission. You conduct a public hearing, you can either support their recommendation, amend the recommendation, or make a recommendation of opposition that goes forward to the City Council. So we do have the Director of Recreation Services, Joan Clappert, here, and she can go into more detail about this request.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell, commissioners, and thank you, Ms. Crawford, for that nice introduction. I'm Joan Clappert, Director of Recreation Services for the City of Wasilla, and I also am staff to the Parks and Rec Commission, which is an advisory commission to the mayor. And obviously, like you stated, is, recommendations always go through the Planning Commission as well. On July 14th, 2021, the Parks and Rec Commission passed a resolution which supports the development of a static archery range in the eastern corner of Lake Lucille Park. You'll see some of the notes from our resolution about the Alaska Bow Hunters Association. Alaska Bow Hunters Association, founded in 1971 as the state's first and only bow-hunting-based conservation organization, and it's one of the largest sporting organizations in Alaska. They also partner regularly with the conservation organizations that work together to contribute to projects and educational activities that support common goals and missions for the betterment of Alaska hunters and the state's wildlife. Among some other items, it's, what they're wanting to really develop in this parcel is an education program, along with the Alaska Department of Fish and Game, to adopt an international bow hunter program with their other thousands of Alaska bow hunters. They've been very instrumental, this group, in working with the Alaska State Board of Game and the Department of Game and Fish on numerous bow hunting issues, laws, regulations, and programs. And their intent for this parcel is to build at their organization's expense a static archery range in the eastern corner of Lake Lucille Park. The parcel itself is at a lower elevation of the area, and its remoteness within the park make this a sport, a spot ideal for the range. It is a static range that only will have field targets and field target points, and there's no broadheads or any of that will be permitted on the site. They will be solely responsible for the maintenance of the range. Their intent is to always be present when the range is in use, and all shooters will sign in before they shoot and sign out, sign out when they're through. They will have strict range regulations and rules that must be followed. Their range is limited to members only, and membership will be open to the public with family memberships available. And also, their plan is to encourage schools and churches, youth groups, to use the range free of charge. And they offer archery lessons to these organizations. And so with that all said, they made a great presentation, and I were very fortunate to have some of those gentlemen with you, with us tonight, that can speak and answer those direct questions that you may have as a commission to ask specifically. And I'd like to introduce Mike Zapansik. He's the Range Committee Chair for the Alaska Bow Hunters. And also, Mr. Mike Di Maria, he's also a member of the Alaska Bow Hunters. And they would, I'd like to have them come up, and you can ask them directly some specific questions about this range. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Mike Zapansik.
I'm Mike Di Maria.
You have any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
None at this time. I think this, with you incorporating the youth and the schools and the churches, is a valuable asset to the community.
We hope it will. I mean, our intention was to have this open to the public, but we found that it was uninsurable that we had to have a membership structure to it.
Liability reasons.
Otherwise, we wouldn't do it.
Insurance is a big thing these days.
But that being said, it was uninsurable having it open to the public, but having members only is less than $500 a year. It's a little safe thing. They just want to have something. They just want to have some control.
An oversight.
Right.
So the, as far as control, you guys are, at this point in time, we're at the preliminary stages, right? We don't have building, we don't have the right real site development, correct? Okay, and that'll come, that'll come later.
I don't know if you're ever, are familiar with the area, but it's kind of a pit area, kind of like a old pond, so it kind of has a natural barrier. So we'll have the, are the backstops of the targets out there, and then they'll be shooting like towards the backstop.
Okay, so it'll be a static range, not a, is there a plan for future walking range?
Well, we're going to see how this course goes, you know? It could definitely, you know, I mean, something we could explore in the future.
We want to make, we're willing to make this financial and time commitment for the static range, and if the public demands it, then we would also put a walking course in. We'll see how this works first.
And I assume this will be summer, summer, fall, spring, summer, fall, seasonal?
Well, I don't know. I mean, there's similar courses like at Kincaid and Anchorage and at Chugia Cook Inlet. I mean, they shoot year round, so.
Okay.
I mean, you definitely could walk in there and shoot.
And is the idea of, you said it's open, it's membership, membership's open to the public, but then there'll be some type of screening as people come and go? Or will they have a pass? Is it going to be manned?
The particulars, it will be run similar to how Kincaid is run.
I'm not familiar with Kincaid, so if you could.
Well, Kincaid is members only, or Cook Inlet, everybody's given a membership card, they're asked to display that. We'll probably have a sign in sheet. We can't, there's no gate we can lock back there because that goes to the pavilion that might be used by other people. By the way, if there is ever is a function back at the pavilion, we will shut the range down, which is easy enough to do because we'll have everybody's texting email, so send an email, I'll put a sign up there, range is closed while any other function is going on back in that area. Really, that's that way, and we're shooting this way. Okay. The particulars, it'll be run similar to the other, the other bow ranges.
Do any of the commission members have any questions?
Commissioner Seals, none at this time.
No questions, Commissioner Seales.
If you guys could please print your names on the sheet, sign in for us, that'd be great. And then we went a little bit out of order, but open it up to, is there anybody wishing to speak on public comment at this point in time? If you could raise your hand, let me know. Okay, then we'll close the public comment portion. And while you guys do that, if we have no other questions, then I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Seals, Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution Serial Twenty-one dash oh nine, a resolution by the Wasilla Planning Commission supporting a recommendation by the Wasilla Parks and Recreation Commission, Resolution Twenty-one dash oh two to the Wasilla City Council regarding development of a static archery range in the eastern corner of Lake Lucille Park by the Alaska Bow Hunters Association located on lot B one, section sixteen, township seventeen north, range one west, Seward Meridian.
Commissioner Seales, second.
All right. Any discussion?
None at this time.
No discussion? Comments?
No comments.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Wasilla Planning Commission, Resolution Serial Number twenty-one oh nine, a resolution of Wasilla Planning Commission supporting a recommendation by the Wasilla Parks and Recreation Commission, Resolution Twenty-one dash zero two to the Wasilla City Council regarding development of a static archery range in the eastern corner of Lake Lucille Park by the Alaska Bow Hunters Association located at lot B one, section sixteen, township seventeen north, range one west, Seward Meridian is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, at this point in time, we've hit our agenda items, and we are going to move into committee of the whole. I need a motion.
Commissioner Seales, make a motion, we move into committee of the whole.
Commissioner Seals, seconds.
Is there anybody opposed? Hearing none, we are in the committee of the whole at seven fourteen PM. Ms. Crawford, would you like to lead us in this lively discussion?
Sure. Hopefully, it'll just be quick discussion, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. It might get lively. So for the record, Tina Crawford, City Planner. So this is a continued discussion about possible revisions to the landscape regulations. The primary focus was initially dealing with industrial zone lots and what kind of allowances or reliefs could be provided to those particular lots. Then there was also kind of like an overall housekeeping, look at the chapter as a whole. We also received some comments and had been tracking comments or concerns that we staff noted since this was adopted in two thousand seventeen, and those changes are incorporated in here. It's a little disappointing to note that the last package that you have in this package includes comments, the latest one we received on June twenty-second, and then even though emails were sent out to the Home Builders Association for Anchorage and Matt Sue and the Chamber of Commerce, we did not receive any, any comments about the landscape section. So what I did is I went forward based on the conversations that we've had and addressed those particular things, and what I can do is quickly walk you through, and if you want to talk about something in detail, I'd just like to at least identify each of the changes. It will take a little bit of time, but at least we got through the rest of the business pretty quick, so. I know you just got this yesterday morning, or Friday afternoon.
Last night.
Yeah, last night.
Yeah. I have a question on the online copy. There were some yellow highlighting. Are those the changes?
No, there was only one that should, there was only one spot that was highlighted in yellow, and it was on in the handout that you have in front of you, which is posted online. It was posted online yesterday as an add-on, so if somebody is there wanting to see what you were looking at, it is there. So on page nine of the handout, the page numbers are in the top right-hand corner, what was highlighted was local roads. And when I was doing this, I didn't have the streets and highways plan in front of me, so I want to confirm that that wasn't official designation, and it is.
Yeah, and there was another one where it was fifteen feet. I can't remember exactly. It was highlighted in an area where it said something, I think it was thirty feet.
Page thirteen.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, greater than center. So that language was something that, we'll also just skip to this one, then we'll start over at the beginning, but some of the comments that came, I know from the boutique company and maybe some that Corvus Design actually talked about during the meeting, the last meeting that we had, was talking about some flexibility on groupings. And a lot, the conversations that I had offline, probably not at the meeting so much, is, well, Anchorage allows you to do groupings, Anchorage does this, Anchorage does that. So what I did is I went to Anchorage's code, and that particular language was there. I just wanted to call it out to you guys that that's something new that I incorporated based on that feedback from them. And so it gives them the ability to do some clustering, but they can't go more than fifteen feet. That was one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was, how do you allow them flexibility to do grouping but not end up with a hundred feet of nothing with everything grouped at the corner? So that's the way Anchorage deals with it, so that's why they're highlighted.
Yeah, that was my only.
As a, something new that showed up.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
So if we want to start on page two, that one's just a quick change, just more for, not every parking lot's extensive, so I find that, I don't know if it's COVID times or not, but people are very argumentative about the words, well, it doesn't say that. Oh, well, it says extensive, I only have five parking spaces, so that doesn't apply. So going for clarity, going for intentional purpose and.
Get rid of the afferbs.
Right, so, so part of that's, you know, addressing that, and like I said, hopefully some of that angst will go away over time. Seems to be exaggerated the last year or so, but again, working to deal with that and give some clear directions. On the top of page three, this is an issue that's come up, although we're not amending that particular section of the code that deals with the clearing restrictions and the shoreline protection area of the code, that has been a conversation that has occurred that, oh, if I'm single family, I'm one of these exemptions, the shoreline protection section of the code does not apply to me, the seventy-five foot setback and the no clearing along the lake. Clearly, it's been in the code forever, it's been applied that way by the planning department since the early eighties. The intent was everyone was subjected to the shoreline protection zone regardless of whether you're a single family or commercial or anything in between. So for clarity, we're adding that in. I will be working with the city attorney, again, probably over the fall and the winter, to bring back specific language that deals with that issue and how you replace if it is cleared contrary to the code, what are the parameters, what are the expectations? That's one thing the code is silent on right now, it just says, don't do it, but it really doesn't say how you have to put it back if you do it. So we'll work on that and bring that in, but I wanted to at least add that clarification that clearly it's always been the intent and been applied that way. Previous, every planning commission approval that I saw referenced took for a variance to the seventy-five foot setback reference that this section applied. So again, intent is good, but it's better if the code just says it plainly, so that's an amendment to make it say plainly.
So what's the intent on number forty-nine?
So that one, so there are some zoning districts that will allow more than one single-family home. So the exemption for landscaping is supposed to be you're a single-family home on a lot or you're a duplex on a lot, because you're, you're a less intensive use, you're that low-density type of use, so you shouldn't be subjected to the same requirements of a multifamily or a commercial development. But there are some zoning districts that will allow multiple single families, so at that point, you start changing.
Multiple dwellings.
Multiple buildings on a lot.
Yeah, let's keep. I'm looking at this, and, and we need to address our definitions, so that single-family is, is one structure. A, a single-family home, a single-family residence, it's one structure. And I understand in other places where we get into the dwellings and we, and we go, okay, if we got, like, you touch on it on the four, more than four dwellings, so that would be a basically a five-plex or larger. Fourplexes, duplexes, triplexes are exempt from, from that clause, but duplex, when there's only one duplex on the lot, we're getting into these semantics about, is a single-family house really a single-family house, or is it really four single-family houses on a property? Or is it duplex? And we're having, I assume you guys are having plan, planning problems with this because people are trying to work through the words.
Actually, this one is a proactive one, so that doesn't become an issue. Again, just based on recognizing the pushback, the.
But would it be easier to address it in the definitions, to say a single-family is one residence on one parcel?
No, because that's a density thing. So there's a type of a structure, and then there's density.
Okay.
Okay, so what this is, this is saying, it's kind of a both in this particular instance. So we have a definition for a single-family dwelling. It says it's a used or detached building on a foundation dug into the ground with a fire-resistant, frost-resistant footing and foundation wall designed for or occupied by and providing housekeeping facilities for one family.
One structure, one family.
It is one building, one family, that is a single family.
Okay.
So what this says is, when you're doing a single, and we can change the word to dwelling unit, but, and that might be a good clarification there, is then it says, when you build one single-family home on this lot, you're exempt. When you build two single-family homes, which is also a nomenclature used as a detached duplex for financing, but this code stands alone and its definitions stand alone, and its definitions apply to the regulations. So unless it doesn't have a definition to where you would put it out to what a, a general definition is, this, these definitions apply to these regulations. So the intent of B on line forty-nine is, you get the exemption when you just put one home, you don't get the exemption when you put two homes. You're now starting to look more, you're not just a single-family dwelling on a lot. And so it's, the C was already there, the one duplex per lot, that was already there, so what I did was mirror that. Why would it be any different for a single-family home? You put two single-family homes, again, you don't see a lot line when you develop a property, you just notice how many homes or how many buildings are sitting on that lot and how many units are in each one of the building. And that's going to create, that determines how much.
I guess my concern is it's, you know, there's a, there's, people are trying to reinvent how we look at things, they're, and they're pushing things through, and it's causing consternation, and it's causing problems around the borough, and it's causing problems here in the city as well, but we're not adapting. Maybe this isn't the right, this is a right place, but indicating that there can be more than one single-family home on a proper, on a parcel just doesn't, I mean, it, it seems to facilitate that muddied interpretation. If it's not consistent, the definition isn't consistent all the way through, and maybe I'm lost, lost in it, but I, I see single-family and I see duplex, and I want to.
They're both defined in our code.
Correct.
And yes, they are different than the real estate definitions and the banking definitions that you see out there today.
They should be consistent.
Not necessarily, I mean.
They, they should, because you, the people that you're dealing with are working in those industries, and if those definite, if those definitions are different, then that's where the, the miscommunication happens. And that's what we're trying to stop, is, is, is slow down some of that miscommunication so that people read this, they understand what they read and they do it, but if they're, most people aren't going to go, okay, single-family, what does that mean? Oh, I know what it means, I'm in real estate, I'm in banking, I understand. And bam, no, they don't, because our definition is a little bit different, so.
I understand what you're.
You know where I'm, you know where I'm going with this.
I do.
Because we've had these conversations about, we don't want, do we, do we want somebody to be able to build offset duplexes, offset individual?
They're two separate buildings, they have one family in each building. You can call it whatever you want, but there are two buildings on that lot and a family's in each one. They are not two in one.
That's a duplex.
Yeah. So I was.
Per you have, because you have one ownership of, of the parcel, but you have two occupants.
Or it could be a condominium. I mean, there's, there's a million.
That's different, that's not.
It's really, but it's still two units in one building. It is ownership, right.
Ownership is different.
But it doesn't look any different on the ground.
But a duplex is not a condo, by definition.
No, it's not by definition.
Right, and that's, that's all I, that's all I'm talking about, is making sure that our definitions, if, if anybody walking into my, somebody steps into my position, they don't get confused like I'm getting confused about the structures versus if I say a duplex, I, I'm thinking two, two living units, one ownership.
So, so I'm not saying that things can't change with times, because things do change. These are standard descriptors that have been used in zoning since the nineteen twenties.
Okay.
I mean, to start changing these, just in Wasilla, when every, you know, when the expectation and the understanding is this way, our code clearly gives you definitions and describes every one of the uses in our code, and if it doesn't, we can add them. But just because our definition is different doesn't mean anything. One of the things you'll see at the end is a landscaping definition for ground cover. Now, ground cover can mean all kinds of things, it depends on what you're talking about. Are you talking about, you know, for stormwater purposes, or, I mean, I was looking it up today, and there's different ways depending on, is it a construction thing, is it a manhole thing, is it, you know, what are you talking about, what do you mean by ground cover? There are definitions in our code that say, for purposes of this section, it means this. So when you're looking to determine a use, what's allowed in the City of Wasilla, you go to the City of Wasilla code, you look at its regulations, and if you're not sure what those words mean, you should be going to the definitions that are in the code.
Oh, I get that, I understand.
And so our code has those definitions, so. So the fact that there are other creative words that are out there that are being used by different markets that give a misunderstanding or can be confusing in and of themselves, I would recommend that we change our code that way. And what I'll tell, the example that I'll give is if you take me to a neighborhood as a real estate agent and you say, this is a single-family neighborhood, and my neighbor now puts another home on that, I'm going to say, there's two single-family homes in here. This is not allowed. What are you talking about? It's supposed to be single-family. The expectation of what single-family is, is pretty clear in most people's minds. Most people understand a duplex is two units in one building. It's only due to the condominium and the financing rules that they've had to create these alternative words to get through a system so that you can get financing for, creative financing for these uses. But when someone pulls up to a lot and sees two individual buildings in it with one family in each one, they don't go to themselves, oh, that's a duplex. They go, look, there's two homes on that property. Now, they may not call them single-family homes, but they go, oh, that house has two houses on it or that lot has two houses on it. Intuitively, at least at this point in time, people don't go to, oh, that's a detached duplex. They just see two homes. Now, you can call it whatever you want and the bank can call it whatever it wants so that they can give you financing for two homes on one lot, but that's what it is. It's two homes, two dwelling units on one lot that are detached.
Still duplex, it's still duplex though.
Only in the sense that duplex means duo, which means two. But our code specifically says a duplex is two units in one building, period.
So that's, I guess that's where I'm going is we need to make it, if we say duplex is two, then we need to, that we keep that consistent. And if there's only two dwellings allowed on a lot, then it, it has to be a duplex or dispel-
Our code does call that out under zoning districts.
Okay.
So again, this is just as an exemption to the landscaping regulations. This has nothing to do with how you develop, how many dwelling units and what the form of the building.
Making sure that we're consistent, that's all, from section to section.
It, it is consistent.
Okay.
It's just, again, it's not consistent with the financing definitions that are used in the world today. None of our code is when it comes to the word duplex.
Well, I-
But that's okay. You don't have to have the same definitions as everything else as long as your code defines what you mean by that.
Okay.
I mean, that's just an accepted legal principle that, you know, in zoning codes, if you define what it means, then that's why. Otherwise, it's the standard general, general definition that's out there that's generally accepted by the public is what you go with.
Two units, one ownership.
No, I'm saying if it's not defined.
Correct.
You go to like something like Webster's and look for a definition.
Blacks.
So-
Blacks law.
You can go to the law one, but you can also go to just the general-
Okay.
Definition. So this one is, again, it's making it consistent with C below that says you can't have two duplexes on a lot, and that's as defined, two units in one building. So you can't have two buildings with a total of four units in them. And you can't have a lot with two separate buildings with one family in each one, whatever you want to call that personally, but the code calls it a single-family dwelling.
Okay.
So if you, if the commission doesn't want to go with it, that's fine, but that's, it is consistent with the rest of the code.
Okay.
The next one is down on, starting on line 50, 57 is where the changes are, but the, the start of it is dealing with legal non-conforming buildings. So it's, it's adding some language there for clarification. Again, some of it has to do with, again, that pushback on words, so adding more examples of what a change of use is and also acknowledging that there, you can add a basement or a daylight basement or additional stories, which now intensifies the use, that non-conforming use, and therefore you shouldn't be exempt if you are crossing those thresholds. So it's more for clarity. And then the last one on line 62 is just changing from possible to feasible. It's just a typical-
So I'm argumentative tonight. I apologize. But, so we're, pretty much any change of tenancy, any change of, actually tenant, tenant use is going to cause a, a trigger.
Not if you're going from office to office, retail to retail.
Which according to the fire marshal, I mean, it's a, a change in the fire marshal classification of, of occupancy. They, but they, so I was curi-, yeah, I was curious about this because some of these uses are in, more intensive and some are less. So if you went from retail office to office, it's a less intense, usually usage as far as parking, landscaping, et cetera, but we're going to trigger it. In, in the fire marshal aspect, I know at least parking, you go from office to retail, the parking changes. You go to restaurant, the parking changes. Those are, those are parking lot triggers. But these are going both directions, so is that-
Okay, so the code already states today what's in black type, the legal non-conforming buildings, except when there's a change of use of the building. At that time, you bring your landscaping into compliance. Okay, so that's just black and white.
Yep.
That means any change. So again, it's just adding the fact that if you increase the floor area, that there's already a non-conforming section of the code that describes this and talks about what non-conforming is. So what this again is identifying when you're exempt, and the whole point of non-conforming is at some point, the non-conformity is going to go away. In this instance, we're talking about the non-conformity when it applies to landscaping. So again, the intent was already there. It was already adopted in 17 that when the use changes, you have to bring your landscaping up to code. This is just giving you examples of what that means. If you, the commission wants to propose revising the previous change that required, a change of use required you to come into compliance, you can certainly do that. This is just language to help people understand what a change of use is. So it's kind of self-defining it within the section versus requiring you to go to definitions.
Other commission members, you guys okay with that? Other commission members, you guys okay with that?
I think so.
Yeah, it brings a little more clarity to the, to the trigger.
Then on the next page, starting on, on page four, starting on line, it's line 68 and 69. So right now, the code says if your building's greater than 5,000 square feet and/or your lot's greater than one acre, you have to have a landscape plan by a landscape architect. So this is striking the one-acre requirement because sometimes what we've actually run into recently is someone buys an acre and a half and they put a little 700-square-foot coffee stand on it. Well, they're over the acre size, but they're really not even clearing the entire lot. And the way it's written, they're required to have a landscape architect do it. So again, removing the acreage out of there and just leaving it based on your building size. Because again, that's where it becomes more, the larger your building is, the more landscaping that's required because you have more parking, therefore it's more necessary for you to have an expert in designing your landscaping to make sure it's cost-effective, that it's going to be successful and to grow and be healthy and able to be maintained over time. That's where the expertise comes into play. If you're under 5,000 square feet, you don't, you can do it yourself. And then assume the risks, I mean, you can hire one if you want or you don't have to. So again, it's just taking the acreage out of the equation. And then multifamily, our code defines multifamily as three or more. So again, this is just more than four. So if you're a fourplex, that's really kind of an accepted norm in Wasilla. We have a lot of fourplexes around. I'm not going to say there's a lot of zoning to allow new ones, but in areas where it does allow that, one fourplex, which again is four units in one building, based on the definition in our code, that doesn't seem to warrant it versus, for example, Aspen Pines up on Wasilla Fish Hook has 10 fourplexes on one lot. Therefore, they should have, you know, because they're now doing multiple fourplexes, it becomes a larger development, again, with more need for that expertise. So this is, before the trigger would have been three, now we're saying it's five. So more than one fourplex. So it's actually releasing the, or loosening up the code, being less restrictive. So if there's no comments on that one, I'll move on. 77 and 78 were just suggestions by landscape architects for clarity to add scientific names and quantity instead of number. I guess it's their typical verbiage that they're used to, so we're proposing those changes. On page five, on lines 91 and 92, it's talking about the minimum area that has to be landscaped. So this is again, this was a request from landscape architects to make it clear that any of the landscaping that's required on the site applies toward this 15%. And so that's what this is proposing to do. So all of your landscape islands go toward your 15%. Any interior landscaping goes toward your 15%. They just didn't feel that it was clear enough and that they were comfortable making that determination, so we're incorporating that. And then it's just rephrasing the however, the planting. So that's just a grammatical type thing. Are there any questions about that one?
Nope.
No.
Then at the bottom of the page, it's talking about violations. This is just adding, again, there'll be more, there'll be another amendment that deals with violations specific to landscaping, shoreline protection, clearing without permits, those kind of things. But I wanted to go ahead and add that there are violation, there are other sections of the code that have remedies and penalties, and so that's just, just for clarity and for understanding. On page six, line 111, the request was to, to add forested areas. So again, that came from a landscape architect, so we just incorporated that in there. Lines 116 and, or 116 is just adding the hyphen. 117, again, was, it was called native plant material area. The request was that existing native vegetation was more clear, so proposing that change. The other request on lines 121 and 122 was that cottonwoods have value. There were at least two landscape architects that presented information that they felt they had value and should be allowed to count for preserving them. So it's proposed to strike that limitation so they can be used to count toward your trees. Any questions on that page?
No, I'm in on that one. I agree.
Then on page eight, lines 158 through 165, talking about the sizes. So there was a conversation of 24 inches, a little harder to find, definitely more expensive. Can there be some kind of leeway on that? And so what I did was look at all the comments, look at what the intent of what our landscaping code is trying to do, and left the requirement for 24 inches in the perimeter landscape bed because again, that's what the primary focus of the landscape code is to make your site more attractive from the street and so that that appearance of the community is better. But on the interior ones and your landscape islands and other interior landscaping, they can be 18 inches.
So part of this was because of what is available, right? That was the, because I, and I come back to it on the trees because one of the, one of the testimonies was, is trees come at six feet, not eight feet. So we have to buy more expensive, we have to get special trees.
And the tree is the next one, so it does go down. So there was conversation about that. I will tell you what the biggest deterrent that I see for projects that occurs is lack of forward planning. So they decide in late April, early May that they're going to do this project and we need to hurry up, get the planting, get the conditional use approval, and oh my gosh, we haven't ordered any plants. So when you plan your project and you order them a year ahead of time, it's not a problem. When you wait till July 1st to start looking for plants to meet your landscaping requirements, you're not going to find them. The, the greenhouses don't have the time to grow them to the height. If you order them the season ahead of time, they have time to get them to have those plants. It just takes some planning. So that's been a major issue. I mean, that's usually what we see being the problem. I don't believe that it's, again, the, when I, the, some of the substitutions that I've had greenhouses contact me with lately is because they're just being contacted now trying to find plants. So people are having to cherry or, you know, go through the dregs of what's left over from everybody else who planned ahead. So I don't think that the fact that someone doesn't plan a year ahead or nine months or six months ahead in order their plants is a reason, a justifiable reason. I mean, that's my opinion as staff. Again, it does take time. 24 inches, it was not that it was that great of a cost difference. It was the perennial flowers that they said had such a great cost to them that they were more expensive than shrubs. It was just, hey, 18 would be better, it'd be easier, and then they, you know, they trim them back during the winter. We don't run into a problem.
The size-wise was more about the trees, I think.
It was, it was more the trees.
Because they, because they don't-
And we did accommodate the trees.
You did, okay.
It was about the perennials and the trees.
Yeah, size was, size was, it was, yeah, because trees. And I know that people cheat with the, the conifers because they let that one little branch grow up six feet and the rest of the tree is two feet.
So again, that was kind of recognizing that, that cost savings and on the interior, you're really not going to see it allows them to do some cost saving. But again, addressing what our comp plan talks about, which is making it more steadily free, peeling from the street, keeping them higher in the street and allowing smaller inside, in my opinion, looked like a good compromise. But certainly the commission can just strike it and change it to 18. Again, that's, it's why I wanted you to see it.
You know, the, you know, the hard thing about looking at, my mind doesn't work this way. I look at all this and we keep, we talk about costs and things like that, and we don't really know what the costs are. And that's the really hard thing for me because sometimes I feel like, all right, I know, I know what I want to accomplish, just trying to figure out how to accomplish. What does it look like? So as we go through this, one of the things that I'd like to, if we can possibly do it, and I don't know if one of the architectural firms will do it, and then maybe one of the landscaping companies would work with us, is could we take our site, a site plan and say, okay, here's an acre site, 5,000-square-foot building. Here's what we need. What does it look like? And it, and it can be just a, a 40,000-foot lot, but how does that same code in, say, Palmer or outside of the borough, inside the borough or in Anchorage, what does that same site cost? Is, is our, is our planning, because, you know, we're looking, I'm looking at it from what I hear out in the sniveling builders out there that are complaining about costs because they're getting hit from every side and so they're, but then when we ask them to come testify, nobody wants to come in here and talk about what the exact problem is. It's just an overall thing. It's like, it's the cloud. So if we had a tool that said, okay, here's, here's where we are, this is what our code is, and with this plan, this is what this project looks like, and this is what it looks like in another jurisdiction and this is what it looks in the other jurisdiction, we're right there. We're, we're reasonable. Is that a possibility to do maybe in the future, working with some of the people? Would they, would they do that? Would they do that for us?
Uh, no, they wouldn't do it. But they would if we paid them.
I was going to say, yeah, if we paid them.
There's a lot of man-hours.
Okay.
You know, that, that would take a lot of time. So-
Because, I mean, I, I look at it and it's like, all right, we're talking about 24, we're talking about six inches. Okay? 24 versus 18. We're talking about cost. We have no idea what the cost is. We're just trying to figure out whether it's a good idea or not. And, and so that's, that's where I'm having my, a little bit of, I, I want to agree with it, but I don't know what I'm agreeing to.
But none of your comments talk about the cost for shrubs.
I didn't, I'm, I'm talking about the people that aren't sitting here, the people that we've talked to out in the public, the other people.
But these, their landscape architects gave the comments.
I am?
These are the landscape architects that do their plans, so you're kind of getting their comment because the landscape architect hasn't been, let's say, I'm sorry, I know you'd rather do 18 and it would save you X dollars or whatever, but the city requires this. So I think those landscape architects have their finger on the pulse as to what's, what's really bothering the developers. And again, the things that they talk about with the perennial flowers and the size of trees.
Right. Because one of the, one of the comments was that it, it costs about 25% of entire project for landscaping. Now, that incorporates the paving and everything else, which is probably a lion's share of that cost, sidewalks, et cetera. So that's, I, that's, I mean, but how does our cost compare to another jurisdiction's cost?
So- So and, and I guess that's where, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I, cost is something that the commission and I think the council is going to be one to consider. However, you have a height dimension in front of you. So everybody knows, you know, what eighteen inches is and about two feet. So you know what that is. There, there is a cost. And then you can drive around and look at the new development, and you can see what twenty-four inches looks like with the spacing that they do and how underdevelopment looks. And it will look that way for, till probably three, three to five years before it flushes out something. So it's not just about cost to the developer, it's about accompling, accomplishing the vision of the, the community and the residents to have a more attractive appearance for these large, these larger scale developments that are coming in. So sure, the decision could be, we're willing to wait ten years before you can even tell there's any plantings out there or we can require a higher standard. I can't tell you that any large development, and even, I just had a small food service stand come in and is willing to put all the plantings in place. So there are some people who aren't able to do that and they're not. I can't tell you that it's had any significant impact on development in the city as far as turning them away. I haven't had anybody come in and go, oh yeah, we want to do this project. Then when they get into the landscaping, I know somebody, one architect said that one person did, but I don't think it was just that. I think it was all the other costs together that factored in. You need a site plan, you need a, you know, civil drawings. I'd rather go to the borough and then I don't have to do anything except for deal with the art marshal. And that's certainly a decision, and there's, you know, it's cost savings. But it's also a choice whether you want to be in the city with the services of a first class city that has zoning and code compliance and services or not. So again, that's a policy decision, ultimately the city council's going to do. So whatever the, the commission wants me to put in this particular document is going to be the one that you're going to be approving and recommending to the council.
I understand.
So I.
It's, 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 uh, yeah, it, it's, it's the, you know, is one of the other commissions that was on. I mean, if you, if we were going to create a new regulation, we had to also look at how it impacted cost. And, and that's all I, I'm, I'm looking at this, is because we hear the, the anecdotal arguments out there.
Well, I mean, we can get the cost of a plant easily from a greenhouse as to what's an eighteen inch spirea cost versus a twenty-four inch. That's easy, I can have that for you at the next meeting. But to look at what another community chooses as their landscaping standards and the cost to implement their landscaping standards versus, now you're saying that we should adopt their landscaping.
No, that's not what I said.
But, but again, so if you just want to know the difference between an eight foot tree and a ten foot tree, we can make a phone call and get that.
I, I guess I look at it from a standpoint of, for you, in your office, somebody comes in and they're, they're talking about this. You can say, look, we're, we're at the, is our landscaping, is our, are our codes, are they the best in the valley? Or are we the most expensive? That's what I would like to know. That's, that's, I guess, what I was looking at. And then it gives you a tool, if there is any pushback, you say, no, our, we, the planning commission looked at this and they looked out for the developers and they looked out for the people and they wanted to make sure that they put forth the best package at the best cost. That's, I, I, I look at it that way. So, I mean, I, I'm hearing all these information and it's like, okay, twenty-four, yes, it looks better. Sunroof looks better in a new car, but I can't afford that extra nine hundred dollars. It's, it, you know, that's the, the crux of it.
Yeah, I, again, it's a policy decision. And certainly the commission, you just need to give me the direction as to what you want on this. It's not my intention or my job to try and force you into a recommendation that you're not comfortable with. Again, but it is my job to point out what your comprehensive plan says that the, the vision is for that community. And that standard, I would say, is higher than Palmer's and possibly Anchorage and possibly some of the, well, definitely Houston. But nothing against, they just don't get into the weeds at that level, because that's not.
That's not Houston.
The intended that they choose to be, and that's their choice.
I, I understand.
This community chose to be a first class city and chose to adopt zoning, which puts a burden on a developer that they don't have in the borough.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of a cost of doing business in the city to, to, to participate in the city with the city services. There are some extraneous costs that go along with that. And then balancing that, again, that's the commission making a recommendation to the council. And then ultimately the council makes that decision.
All right.
So after, after this, if you guys look through any of this and you want me to put it in the draft, because I was anticipating bringing it back in September for a public hearing. If you have anything, you can email it to me and I can call it out as a draft and put a note that this was recommended by commissioner, whatever. And then you can talk about it in the meeting, people will know what's being proposed as far as the possible amendment or consideration. So like I said, I know having it in one document, this is the first time you've seen it that way. So that's probably the easiest is you can just email any proposed revisions and then I'll incorporate them into that document. Or if you have them tonight, that's mine too. So for sure, the next one, the trees?
Pardon me?
Yeah, sure.
I've talked to several landscapers, not landscape architects. Okay, the landscape architect is an expensive cost above the landscaper. And I know that some businesses want to have, a lot of it's location, location, location. And so sometimes you want to have that city location so that you have the services and the traffic. But a few of them have said that a lot of their clients have gone outside the city limits because of cost. And then we talked about availability of plants. Well, a lot of these landscape, a lot of these plants that come up here are shipped up from Oregon. So I was just down in Oregon last week and I went to two of the places that they order their plants from. And the cost between the smaller plants and the taller plants is quite significant, plus the actual weight. So you're adding the cost of the weight of shipping those plants up here. So I, I, I just need to see, I'd like to see a good balance between what we've got here and the actual costs, so.
I think, I think we agree with you that, yes, twenty-four inches, those look, we, we understand two feet versus eighteen inches is going to look better. It's going to be a plant that potentially can survive differently than the, say, the trees do. The bigger trees don't necessarily survive, the smaller trees actually adapt sometimes better and then grow faster. But it's, that's, that's the hard thing. It's trying to, I mean, you're asking, we want, everybody wants us to make a decision on it. And that's the, that's what I'm, I'm having a trouble with is, okay, twenty-four versus eighteen seems like a real simple, it looks better, but what is the cost ramification? And that's, that's why I think there's a little bit of hesitancy from our standpoint.
Well, this actually is saving the money, this proposal.
Okay.
Okay.
Because the way it's worded right now, every, every shrub on that lot has to be twenty-four inches or thirty-six inches if it's a hedge for parking. So this is already a cost savings.
Going back down.
It's just not a full cost savings. But if you want to propose it as a full cost savings and just say across the board, every shrub can be eighteen, you can certainly do that too. That's what I said, that's what I meant by the compromise. It was recognizing that there is an increased cost. Really, where are you going to notice the larger plants? It's going to be from the perimeter of the property versus, you know, once I get in the interior, I'm probably not focusing so much on what the landscape islands look like or the parking islands, you know, those things. This is just for a visitor coming through the community, a potential business looking to locate into our community. How does it look from the roadway to them? Does it look like an attractive community with amenities and, again, visually attractive landscaping? Or does it look like a community that, you know, that has lower expectations and requirements and isn't so much focused upon that visual aspect? So again, it's, it's just a choice. And so this was already a cost savings because everything interior can be smaller.
Okay.
It's just focused on the perimeter, but certainly you can propose it from the other. And I can, I can bring back cost for an eighteen to twenty-four for a couple of different shrubs if you want to see that. Again, I, I guess, yeah, I, I do understand about the arch- landscape architects, I mean, that's, that's a significant cost, which again, is why it's not triggered until you hit five thousand square. So the McDonald's isn't anywhere close to five thousand, I think in there around two thousand something square feet. They chose the landscape architect anyway and put it in, but again, they're.
Major corporation.
Yeah, they're a big corporation.
Yeah. Mom and pop is different.
Right. And I, I have had those do that. I've had many of them draw them on themselves. And just for example, Cremont, it's, the coffee house on BW extension is doing their own landscape plan because they're under, it's their addition and they're already under old landscape codes, so they have a different provision. But with this change, they would be allowed because they're under five thousand square feet for that building. So they could do the drawings themselves or choose to take on the cost of the next burden they want. So that's, that's where that cost savings comes in. At five thousand square feet, I'm trying to think what would be at that size. You're getting into a significant sized building with a significant amount of parking. I think certainly you could up the size, but that's halfway through what you can do in rural residential. The cap is ten thousand square feet, so this is at, at midpoint of what you can do. But yeah, I can certainly get that, because then I've got a note here to get the cost for the shrubs. On the trees, we proposed, the conversation was to go to eight feet, except as required, specifically required in this chapter.
What, what were we be for?
Ten.
We were at ten?
Yeah, and so it's there, it's straight.
Oh, so the eight, eight is what they recommended? That's the size they can get?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was some chatter on the side of six would be nicer, but.
Well, that's what I thought they said they came in at, was six feet.
And talking to the people at the tree nurseries in Oregon, the younger trees ship better and they last, seem to last longer versus the taller ones.
They grow up quicker.
I don't think any of them said eight feet was a problem, it's just there is a cost to them. Six feet, you're, you're pretty much, unless you're looking at an evergreen, you're looking at a stick out there with a couple, with a little tuft on top of it. You can look at First National Banks Parking Lot, and those I think are ten foot trees, and they don't look like much. So, I mean, yeah, but.
Well, those trees get a lot of salt on them too.
No, never, so our previous code was eight feet. We changed it to ten feet when we upped this in seventeen. There was never any pushback on eight feet, finding eight feet, eight feet survived, and none of that chatter happened for eight years prior to that.
So eight's the number.
I'm going to assume that, sure, six is always better because then it's significantly cheaper than eight. But again, it's, what, what does that tree look like? So the only thing that, again, this is the compromise that I went for is that as specifically required in this chapter, what that's referring to is your street trees. And it's one tree for thirty feet along your frontage. If they have a hundred feet, you're talking three trees, but they need to be ten feet. So again, so they get that more visible landscape bed versus the interior, they can be the eight feet. You can certainly take it to eight for the whole thing, but that, that's the way, so that's a compromise. So everything inside, which is where the bulk of their trees typically are, is on the inside of the landscape islands, because you have to have one at each end of a parking row. And you have to have between every twelve spaces, you have to have a landscape island. So your, at least half your trees are probably going to be tied up that way and not more for a larger site. But again, you can just take it to eight across the board and strike the rest of it, that's an option too. And then I added, I broke it down between deciduous and evergreen. And so the evergreens are proposed to allow in six feet, because that's what they said. That was the one they really focused on was, you know, the evergreens as far as the holes that you need to dig and the sizes that you can find and that kind of stuff. They were definitely the ones that they focused on as being difficult. So if they choose to use them as a street, as a street tree, that they have to be larger than that. But if they are used on the interior, then they can go to six. So again, you guys can think about that, if you have any proposed changes, just let me know. So then on the next page, it's dealing with the ground cover and the mulch conversation. So that was, again, a conversation that occurred frequently is vegetative mulch blows away. But yet some landscape installers said to me, I'm really glad you require landscape mulch because people don't water the plants like they're supposed to after they're planted in the ground. And if the mulch is there, it retains the moisture, which helps the trees and the shrubs survive, even if they don't water them. So there's pros and cons to it. Certainly it's a recurring maintenance cost versus gravel or some other options. So what this does is it does not give wholesale permission to use gravel unless you're in those industrially settled areas that don't have frontage on a major roadway. That is incorporated in here to allow them to do that, which kind of makes sense where they can use grass because they're, they're usually the old heavy equipment and trucks and things. And trying to keep that in society is probably more difficult than you get with a normal commercial use. So this allows you to substitute, you know, creeping plants, as long as they're perennial, evergreen ground cover, ornamental grasses, or if you can find some kind of a landscape quality rock that you can, when you have, that it can be considered. So again, it's, it's up to the commission as to how you want to direct me to do that particular section.
So if, if I hear what you just said correctly, so they can use landscape rock in non-industrial zone lots?
No.
Okay.
No, they, so, yeah, it's just for the industrials. So that's that, that was what the conversation initially started, was how can we wire industrial lots treated the same? So they're allowed to use the gravel across the board or some other kind of ground cover, it's their choice. Anyone else that's required to do landscaping has to either do the mulch or choose some kind of plant cover. So I believe when we get into the section that specifically, so, okay, this is just a section taught me about defining and describing what ground covers and mulch are. Once we get into the particular type, release the gravel. I wish Alaska had more landscape quality rock. They don't seem to have it as an option. The only one that I've seen, and it was just recently, is Mac Federal Credit Union has a rock in their beds right now. And it has a, it has a different coloration to it. And it's kind of in a rectangle or a shale type shape, which makes it not just look like some rock out of a gravel pit. So it has some visual interest to it and, you know, looks like it's an intentional landscape rock. I think that could be an option, which is why there's still that provision that you can come in with something and propose something. They can certainly come to the commission too, if they want to, as part of their approvals and ask for specific approvals based on, obviously you want to be careful that you're not just doing it based on I like you and don't like you, it will review, but not you. But it's, it's kind of hard. What we see out there is, is a lot of, just like I said, it's, it goes from pea gravel to ginormous river rocks that don't make any sense in a little tiny landscape bed. And they choke out all the plants and the flowers. It doesn't work anyway, and it doesn't look like a landscape bed, which was the whole point of giving up the thirty percent vegetation on the site and going to fifteen percent. It was that trade-off, and it was an intentional trade-off. So the city lost fifteen percent of the tree canopy off every lot in this city. And the trade-off was, you will do a formal landscape bed that, that looks like a landscape bed. And I've seen them in Anchorage, I've seen them out here McDonald's, although yes, it is a maintenance cost. Their did not blow away during the winter, the last three winters, it did not blow away. Does it break down over time? It needs to be rebuilt? Sure it does. I don't know if it's a yearly thing or if it's an every year thing. So something bring it away.
Yeah. And there, there is landscape quality rocks accessible by highway in Alaska. But you're talking, you know, going at the trucking cost to get rocks up from Seward or from over in the Glen Allen area. The trucking cost is just, it's, it's not feasible.
It's not like Midwest where you have all the limestone and stuff like that that you can get.
And from a cost standpoint, I mean, I've been watching the mulch bags, they're not astronomically expensive, even at Lowe's and Home Depot. And I'm sure you, what I've seen, a lot of these sites that actually put the mulch in are going with a, is a bark mulch. There must be some. There must be some plant lumber mill or something that prepares this or something. I don't know where they're getting it from because I don't see it in the stores.
There's some, there's some bigger, actually I got bark. I actually got chunk bark this year and then fine bark and then just mixed them for my landscape ads, but, yeah.
Right, so I've seen that show up in the beds versus just the chip stuff that you buy at Lowe's or Home Depot. So it's a heavier, again, I've heard pros and cons, when I did the research online, there's pros and cons for both. And there may be a mix, and like I said, I think there's some options in there for that, so.
So, from a, above that, actually I may have moved, you're on pa, you're on page?
Nine.
Nine, okay. So above that, in the matrix, that's been there for a while.
Ten seventeen.
Is it, is it realistic as far as what's available to us in this area, as far as, I mean, looking, I mean, when we have the bigger sites to ask them for a variation of all these different plants versus putting in the plants that they know that will last, or is there any, are we seeing any pushback on that, is that, is that an issue?
No, no one said anything since it was adopted as far as being an issue. Again, trees are just, there are quite a few variety of trees that I see come across. I'm not, I'm gonna say I have at least seen two dozen different types of trees. You know, because we don't prescribe what type of tree. So I see all different kinds of trees rolled through. Size, when you order them, that, you know, that becomes an issue. But as far as having diversity, that's never come up as an issue. And it's actually, again, most landscaping, and you're not gonna hear it from a landscape architect because the whole point of diversity, well, it's more attractive visually attractive, but it has more to do with the help. If something comes in and you have all one kind of tree on your lot, and something comes in like the spruce field and kills them all off, you've lost everything off your tree, whereas if you have diversity, you still have someone who can go and play it back. So it's a combined, it's a combined reason for diversity.
Okay.
But I think they, like I said, it's never been raised as an issue. And then page ten, these are just responses to, they do say we don't have, what we don't have a lot of is this category breakdown between what's an understory, a canopy tree and those kind of things. So they have proposed that we not get into breaking them down by category. So that's what those changes are, is just removing, trying to describe what understory versus canopy because they said there aren't enough choices when it comes to breaking them down by category, so we're just called trees. And then instead of saying canopy trees, just large matured trees, you know. One that's ten feet wide, maximum height, probably gonna be a different sort of something like that. So again, those were in response to their suggestions that they had for clarity. Page eleven is a proposal. Again, it's a cost savings to the developer, no one actually asked for it. But I will tell you, the staff implementing it is kind of like, maybe this is more than we need and also because, just from a attracting standpoint from staff, it becomes labor intensive too, is we used to just hold a guarantee till we checked the landscape. Then it was good to go. Then people, the conversation when we did the amendment of seventeen was look at what Anchorage does, look at what other communities do. They require a two-year guarantee, so I said, oh, okay, we'll go with a two-year guarantee. We already have code compliance in our code that says you have to maintain forever, so if they die and replace it, it's not enough. So if they don't replace it, you can write them a citation for three hundred dollars if they don't replace it, if they continue to not. And so we have a vehicle, so what I'm proposing is that we just strike that requirement for the two-year bond after the inspection's done. And so that's what that's requiring there. Now, the companion piece of that is at the end of your documents. Oh, it's inspection on page twenty-nine. If you have a landscape architect prepare your plans, the proposal there is to have them go out and do the inspection. Make sure that there are the plans in place, that they're healthy, that they were planted the way that they, as an expert, know.
Be the first time they ever went to the site.
Huh?
It'd be the first time they ever went to the site.
Then they can check it there and they can certify that it meets the standards on that landscape plan that was submitted to the city. If the plan was drawn by the property owner themselves or whatever, then city staff will go out and inspect it at that time. And then we also retain the right to go out and inspect these others too, but they're the landscape architects, they should certify that it meets the code requirements and then we can release the guarantee. So again, it doesn't require you to use one above that the other code already does. It just puts that responsibility on the person who understands about soils and the health of plants and spacing and all of that. So, yeah, it didn't seem to make any sense to just hold a guarantee for two years. I mean, the one that I saw that just came through is like three thousand dollars a year just to hold that bond for about sixty thousand. So that's a significant cost. So again, this document's proposing some cost savings to do. So then the next page is where we start finding out the specific areas and types of landscaping. So line two twenty-nine, three fifty-three talks about that landscape bed. Again, this is only on your road frontage, this isn't your lot perimeter, this is road frontage and perimeter. And so some of us just were worrying for clarity. And it gives the flexibility, right now our code just says ten feet though, period. Doesn't take into account any kind of where a driveway is or a change in geography. So what Anchorage has in there, and that's what I mirrored in here, is it allows them to average that width as long as, so in some places it may be five, others it, you know, may be twelve, depending on how they're having to design that site. But overall, well, no, it can't be.
It can't be less than eight.
But they could do, at least it gives them a couple of feet to play with that they don't have right now to deal with some unusual things. And that's what people have said to me, only a couple of times, but it would be nice if we could have some flexibility already built in the building without having to go to another. So that was the step at doing that. They also asked that we specifically call out with these roadways and sidewalks, when you have those, you deduct those from the linear road range when you're determining the number of plants. I thought it was intuitive, but sure, clarity's better, so we're proposing to add that there. Meaning if you have a hundred foot wide driveway, every twenty foot driveway, you only do it on eight feet, it has to be landscape. They wanted it clear, they felt that.
I'd make my driveway eighty feet wide.
So then at the top of the next page, this has to do with the components in the beds. So, broke it out in residential and commercial, and that would be multifamily. Multifamily residential, commercial versus industrial. So this is where you call out the different standards for industrial zoning versus the other ones in the city. We changed the number of perennials from sixteen to nine. I originally had eight, but one of the landscape architects said, oh, I think nine's better. So I'm thinking nine is a spacing thing versus odd numbers are easier to space. I don't know, I just figured it was. And they wanted the ability to have ornamental grasses counted as flowers. Right now the code doesn't allow it, so that gives them some options. They said those are cost savings plus. Again, they look interesting, if you go through the drive-through at Kane's, they have those, it looks like, I like Seals and Bee Gees grasses. I mean, and I think maybe Kendall Ford may have some. So in some instances it works and it gives them that flexibility. So clarifies in the street tree, we took away the measurement because under the street tree, it tells you what you need to do. The thing that it does incorporate now is a mix, and I knew that came up. I think Commissioner Seals actually brought it up, may have been more about flowers, but about having some kind of mix that's something blooms, then you're done, there's nothing else. So kind of took that and modified it as far as for shrubs, so they'd be a mix of evergreen, flowering, deciduous and just other deciduous. With you not having more than forty percent, that gives you that visual interest and also gives you some evergreens. So during the winter, there's something that at least over.
That lingers like landscaping.
And then they have the flowering, so that offsets the loss of the flowers. And again, that fifteen foot on center was having to do with clustering, and that was similar to what Anchorage had, which was what kept being brought up. So the industrial ones, they have the requirement for two shrubs and the street tree, they don't have the flowering requirement. But then there's an option that they can, okay, so it has to do with ones on local streets and the ones that are on major streets. It allows them to group the shrubs around the trees, so they still have that requirement. And when you go back under the mulch section, that's where it says industrial can use rock. So you don't have to say it again here, this you would refer back to the mulch section. So they would be able to have landscape beds that have only trees and shrubs and rock mulch. So they wouldn't have that flower component, but they would still have to mix up their shrubs. The ones that are on the streets classified as commercial collector arterial or interstate, because parts highway is interstate as far as the classification, it has requirements. But then it also gives them an option on line starting on two seventy-four, that instead of the ten foot bed with the requirement, they can do a bed, a five foot bed with the shrubs. And that would be the end of what they have to do, or what they're required. They already have those, a lot of times they have outdoor storage anyway. So I think it's a win for the city to give that opaque fence up, even if you're giving up a landscape. But you still have the street trees which is that, that little bit of greening up. So are there any questions about that particular section? So then the next one is two eighty-seven, it's striking the B because that's inconsistent with the section that says you, later that says you have to screen your loading areas. So that's just a cleanup there. And then again, saying adding that the industrial ones are exempt there, so that was added in. So the parking lot perimeter, some of this was duplicative, so rather than just keep repeating everything that was required, just refer to what's in the perimeter planting bed because that is the requirement anyway. And then, just saying that when you flip it over to the next page, then it starts on line three hundred, talking about the vegetative hedge where you place it. So reduce the height from three feet to two and a half feet, but it requires at least a third of them to be evergreen and to achieve a height of four feet. And then that they can do spacing, but it has to be in such a way that it will provide that continuous edge type of effect that covered within three years. So it gives them that time period. So they, so a landscape architect who undertakes a greenhouse would understand what kind of plantings they need to choose to achieve that. Again, the continuous coverage within three years came from Anchorage, that's something that I can look around. Then it's starting on three oh nine, this is talking about the landscape islands again. It's just taking it out of paragraph form and adding, you know, putting them out as individual items for clarity. The only change in there is going from a hundred square feet to a hundred and sixty square feet, which again was recommended by landscape architects due to the size needed for trees for them to be healthy. That's right.
I've kind of done a tour of the school parking lots, because I worked for the school. And a good case in point is Wasco Heights Parking Lot. You have two or three trees in a hundred square foot thing, and they've been growing and continuously thriving now for the nine years that I've been in the school district, so. I, the hundred and sixty square feet, eh, it may be a little excessive in my opinion.
It's gonna detract from what they have to do elsewhere. I mean, it takes the percentage down, if I, if I, if I have to do.
A hundred and sixty there.
If I have to do sixty extra feet here and sixty extra feet here, it's just gonna take away from, I mean, they're just gonna move it.
You're talking a three foot width expansion on their landscape island, because they already have to have it twenty feet long. So we'll just make it three feet wider. That's the change.
It may cut down on parking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I've seen things that what a landscape architect says won't do. I've seen birch trees in clusters, and they say, oh, you can't plant them that close together. I'm like, well, do you not see this area where they're that way?
Birch trees live, I mean, they, birch is not, it's a weed, it's not a tree.
Right, and actually on sites, it tells you how to install them in groups and clusters, so. Yeah, I don't take everything, so.
Yeah.
I'm just saying I incorporate it because they said it was healthier and that it would.
Yeah, no, so that.
Invest that much money in a tree, an extra three feet to make sure it thrives.
I just, I see that as, it's gonna cut down on, you know, your usable space.
No, it's just being reallocated.
Yeah.
They have to do fifteen percent landscaping. So now they're gonna, now that landscaping has just been pushed to an interior island, that's all. A bit more concrete, but.
Then if you go to the top of sixteen, the only other thing was some direction. I do like the flexibility our code gives, that we don't prescribe the type of trees. I don't, I don't, I mean, some communities do that, I would never recommend that that would be ideal for our community or that they would be receptive to it. But the columnar aspens, they're not really trees. They're great for if you need to break down a facade of a building and you need something tall and skinny that doesn't take up and you can put it closer to a building and it doesn't encro, you know, you can put it in a more compact space. The point of a tree in a landscape island is to provide a shady canopy.
Poplars don't do that well in Ontario, do they?
No.
Well.
Because an aspen's a poplar.
Well, those, those columnar ones, those ones that are real tall, they actually do fairly well here.
So Anchorage has those in their medians some places, which, I mean, that's a great place to put them because you don't have a lot of room for trees on the way to the airport, I think they're in the median there. So they're a great tree when you're in a constrained area. But again, the landscape island, you're trying to put a canopy and break up that sea of asphalt and again, it, a lot has to do with creating shade and we have
We don't have to.
A distinct lack of that.
We don't have to, this is where I was actually, you say thirty percent or forty percent, so they go, go find all these different things. Now we're finding these inexpensive options that really don't work versus leading them to what we want it to look like. I guess that's the double edged sword of it, but if we have trees that we know don't work, I think it would be better to say that.
You mean just call out the specific tree?
If there's certain trees, I mean, because it, it becomes a point of contention in a landscaping plan of some, if you're going back and forth on something that you're looking at and you're like, this isn't gonna work. And they're looking at you going, well, everybody else likes it. If they know upfront, you don't have to, you don't have to argue it.
Okay, I can do that.
This is where we need a week-long education, trees.
And then actually I missed.
Bring in three beavers for consulting.
On line three point one, that's sixty each, ninety, for the perennial flowers to reflect the rest of the changes that we did.
Okay.
And it allows up to thirty percent of the ground cover to be grassed areas or lawns. So that minimizes the amount of mulch or whatever you have to do. And that works best on the edges of a parking lot near the lot line because a lot of times that's a grassy strip anyway and they can just rub it together. So it gives them that flexibility there that they didn't have. The rest of it, looks like it's just, again, just reorganizing it to make it easier to understand these are individual components. So that's it for that page. Seventeen is just striking the exemption that's there because it's already addressed at the beginning of the section, so it's just duplicative. So I just went ahead and cleaned that up. Line three forty-eight, again, goes with the one sixty. Just for clarification, do you want me to change these back to a hundred or leave them at one sixty?
Um.
Because I kept them the same throughout.
Isn't there, isn't there some places upfront where it's a hundred? And begin the document. And begin the document?
About for area.
That's just, okay.
Yeah.
So this is talking about if you're dealing with a confined bed, it has to be a minimum of 100 square feet. Right now, proposing the change of to 160, so...
And Eric explained it, it's just a percentage or you're 15% anyways.
Leave it for public comment and take lab...
Yeah, we'll see what the public says.
They actually recommended it to the landscape architects.
Yeah, well, we'll see what the public says if anybody shows up.
The rest of it again is just grammar. On page 18, again, it takes the formula down to nine from 16. The rest of that, letter G, again, just clarifying when it says 15% of the parking area must be vegetation. This clarifies that. And then it shows that you may not clarify much for you reading it in text, but if you had a site plan in front of you, it would make more sense. So you may have, well, I think the elementary school, I did run elementary school, has that perimeter driveway. But then they have the interior parking with the aisles.
Yeah.
The perimeter driveway does not count toward the area when you're having to decide how big your parking area is.
Yeah, no, that, it's not, it's not...
Actual parking lot itself.
Yeah, it's not designed as a parking.
Right.
Yeah.
And so this is just clarifying that you don't include that in your count because I've never required them to include that, but they asked that that be put in the code so it would be clear. So that's the intent of that section there.
No, that makes sense.
Then street trees, that's where I told you that...
I thought we were going to eight, six.
Not for street trees, just for the interior trees. So that's what I said. The way that I wrote it was keeping the street trees at 10 because it's one per 30 feet. But again, you can change it if you want to. The interior trees, the ones in the landscape islands and anywhere else on the site can be the eight feet or six feet if they're evergreen. Deciduous have to be 10, evergreens have to be eight if they're, if they're used as a street, when they're used as a street tree.
Are these, are these trees that are available?
They have, for the last, since 17, every development that's come through has found a 10-foot tree and put it out there. So, well, I can't say every. Every site plan has shown that they could get a 10-foot tree. And many of them that we have inspected have the 10-foot trees. The ones that do not have to replant, but...
What type of?
It was just a choice. It wasn't that it wasn't available. It's just like shrubs. Prior to the COVID times, there was never any conversation about it's not available. It's just, I don't want to pay for it. COVID may have impacted that availability. Again, you don't have people working in greenhouses. You don't have the, the shipping people and all of that activity. So I think that's about a point, but that's not gonna stay forever. That's just a blimmin' time. So to amend the code to address that. But again, that's what I said, the interior trees lowered it. The street trees would be taller to give that, to accomplish that visual appearance. So again, that was the compromise that I proposed. But certainly the commission can change it if you, if you desire. So it's no worse than what they had, it's no better. It's no better and no worse for the street trees. It's just the internal trees that got...
Shortened.
So then when you go to page 19, again, just, this is just more tweaking of words. On line 387, does lower. It said additions of 1,000 square feet. Some of our buildings aren't bigger than 1,000 square feet, so it would be a huge addition. So I propose that it go down to 500, but you can leave it the thousand that it is. Again, the purpose of non-conforming status is to, when you do a change, you're supposed to come into compliance. The, the goal is over time, you're gonna come into compliance. You're gonna age out or the use will change and compliance is gonna happen. It's, the intent is not to continue to keep a non-conforming use, non-conforming forever. That's when you're in a zoning code. That may be a property owner, as I could, but it's not a zoning code. When the code changes and the expectations change, the goal is to establish these triggers for when you come into compliance. So would so many of our buildings be only 2,000 square feet now? It's, there'd be an addition that would trigger it. Again, you can take it or not take it, but that was just something that I was going through.
What do you guys think?
I don't know. I'm kind of on the thousand-square-foot path myself.
Compromise, flip coin, 750. To your name.
Yeah, that sounds good.
750.
I think the 500 is too small. Thousand might be too big. 750 might be the compromise.
Yeah.
500 addition just doesn't seem, I mean...
That's, that's small.
I mean, how many permits do you get for 500 square feet?
If I'm in the downtown area, I mean, that's not, I mean, that's common.
How many have you got, how many have you got under 500 feet or over? Between 500 and 1,000, how many have we got in the last four years?
We don't do a lot of additions, actually. That's why I said you can either leave it the way it is or change it. It's again, just looking at, it's looking at the, we either have really large commercials or we're really small commercials depending on the way we run. So if you're really small and you're non-conforming, you don't have your street trees and stuff, and you don't have your landscaping, your addition is gonna be small. So maybe it needs to be proportionate. Maybe up to 50, you know, if it's 50% or less or more of the size of your building that you have, maybe it needs to be proportionate instead of an actual fixed number. Downtown has it that way. I mean, if you did an addition of more than 15% or something like that, then it triggers compliance. So that way it's proportionate to your building size versus being a fixed number.
That would be 150 feet on a thousand-square-foot shack.
Yeah.
Right, but again, his compliance would be much smaller too because lots probably only 50 feet wide or 40 feet wide. So you're talking one tree.
Probably a three-eater commercial. It's the coffee, it's the coffee shop that added another. What do you guys think? You wanna go percentage or flat? I like a flat better because I think a percentage, you, you have the unintended consequences of a 1,200-foot area getting hit with 120, they can only do 120 feet.
Yeah.
If we, if you're, and the intent is, I mean, I, I don't like the intent of, of cutting it in half. I understand that you want to bring everybody in compliance. I know that they've been trying to bring the parking lots over here in the downtown overlay district to compliance since the 80s. And they're still gravel.
No, I mean, if you said you don't get that many in there, I would just say leave it at a thousand.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm leaning too.
It's either really big or very small.
I may have been really capping it at the time I wrote that one. Some have more, yeah, that's fine. Okay, I'll leave it at 1,000. So the next page, some grammar things, some clarity things. Has to do with resident buffering for residential. The intent was there. This just makes it clear who you're buffering between, when it applies, that kind of thing. So it's just, it doesn't change the intent or the application, it's just clarification language. You can look at that, but like I said, it's just more calling it out rather than leaving it to an intuitive type application. And then on the next page, just striking right now, we don't have a zoning district that breaks out heavy commercial and heavy industrial. It's just either commercial or industrial, which is... And so since we don't have heavy commercial, I just changed it to industrial and struck heavy commercial. So not a substantive change there, just something that reflects our zoning districts and our uses right now. It's not gonna be changed in the future. So then the next change, page 26. Again, this was just a request about the canopy understories, striking that. And then I just changed the columns to deciduous and evergreen. Again, if you're gonna do a buffer, having that mix of evergreen and deciduous trees makes sense because you're trying to buffer noise and visual impacts. And then adding that requirement that there must be a mix of the shrubs to have it evergreen because it didn't have that before. So again, let's think of this as a commercial building next to a residential building. I mean, a residential home. So these are the requirements. This many trees, this many shrubs, but there was no defining of what type of tree or what type of shrub. So they can put all deciduous trees and all deciduous shrubs. And in the wintertime, they have a fence with basically no other buffering or filtering. So this is requiring some evergreen, which is consistent with what we did along the perimeter length of the bed. So that's the only change there. And then I added on the top of page 27, just clarification that you have to meet the size requirements because it wasn't in there and that question would come up, well, what size do the trees have to be? Well, the first part says the minimum size for trees and shrubs is this, so this just puts that, that connection back so they know where you go look for it. Then partway down, starting on 465, this one came up actually about the conditional use for wasilla concrete. It was actually a settlement to do with an estate settlement through the court system. The jersey barriers were used, or concrete blocks were stacked to create this wall between the two property owners. And during that meeting, I don't, I don't think Commissioner Seals and Commissioner Sage L. were on at that time, but I think Commissioner Bushnell was. There was some feedback about, well, that's a terrible, that's an ugly-looking wall. We shouldn't allow that kind of wall. Why would we want to do that? And at that point, there was nothing the commission to do or staff could do because again, that was a settlement requirement out of this estate. So that issue was raised. So this said, all this is doing is saying, when we say a fence or wall, we mean what's normally perceived as a fence or wall. Don't, don't create a wall out of garage doors. Don't use jersey barriers and call that a wall. We use materials that are typically associated with a fence or wall.
A cinder block wall would be fine, wouldn't it?
If you put some kind of finish on it or something. If you just put it, you know, well, one, I don't know that you can get that many cinder blocks here in Wasilla, can you?
Oh, yeah.
Can you?
They make them every day.
And they're getting more expensive and more expensive.
I would say if you're putting it between residential and commercial, no, that, that shouldn't be acceptable. That's not a normal, not without a finish on it, at least paint it or something.
Well, yeah, but I mean...
You deal with painting, but you would, they, they make...
They make nice-looking cinder blocks.
I think what you have here is fine. A cinder block wall, if it came in and showed you the design, especially between a residential and a commercial.
Depends on what it looks like and where it is.
Would be, would be, yeah, that would be a good thing.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's, it's definitely a noise deflection.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that wall between wasilla concrete is a noise deflection too, but it's...
Well...
Well, you could, they, they make, they make all kinds of...
It's concrete blocks. They're just, the blocks are like this.
Yeah, they're jersey blocks is what they are. Those aren't concrete blocks.
Lots of places in the states where you have complexes, especially apartment complexes, that are concrete block. That's what they do.
Right, but don't, yeah.
And you can get, you can get concrete block that has a rough side on it, so it looks really nice.
And that's why I said, depending on how it looks, if it looks industrial at the end of the day or if it looks finished, then, yeah, sure.
You didn't prohibit cinder blocks, so we're...
No.
We're good. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other one, just the one under it, is just clarification about, you know, determining that it means. It's just clarification of how that interpretation is made. So it doesn't change it at all.
Yeah.
And the one at the bottom of the page starts talking about the enclosures. So it's just adding that the enclosure has to at least be the height of the dumpsters. It didn't have a height before. Some dumpsters are smaller, some dumpsters are bigger. So this leaves it, the dumpster is the determining factor. So rather than put a height, and then...
Are we gonna deal with that with, I build the building, tenant changes, moves in. They get a bigger, I mean, the enclosure's built, it's set there and they end up... Denali refuse has new, new trash cans, they're taller and bigger. How are we gonna address that in the future?
Then enlarge your enclosure. I mean, it's probably gonna be too small anyway. If you built it for a small, I mean, it's up to the developer to, to... Most of my C are overbuilt, that dumpster's loading them. And I guess that's so they have room to put an extra one or a bigger one in the future. So I would think that would be up to them to do that kind of planning. Otherwise, if they need to change it out, then they would just have to add an extension to their enclosure.
Okay.
And then the next one is the, those loading areas that I was talking about where we struck the exemption because this section of the code is in here. There were questions that have come up about these. What height do these evergreen trees have to be? Because of the type of evergreens and the intent of it actually screening it from view, eight feet is what we went with versus the six feet here. And then we've had some instances where the loading area is more interior on the lot. Still visible from the roadway, but because they have parking there or drive aisles or something on that building, they can't put the required screening right there next to it. So this allows them to put that evergreen screen in the perimeter landscape bed. That's the way I've dealt with it on some sites. I know Mac Federal Credit, you could land it that way because they couldn't put it up right next to where the zone was. So it gives them some flexibility there. And like I said, puts it in the code so it's not subject to me saying yes or no when they come into the court. They know what their options are. So like I said, that gives them more flexibility instead of taking it away. Then waivers. That particular language was a little bit wonky when I was reading it. So I just, again, changed it for clarity. Yeah, so, and then I changed, I did insert the word on 494 to paved parking. So for example, if there's a paved parking lot and you're doing an addition to a building, the code says you have to bring it into compliance to the greatest extent feasible. The expectation is not that you would dig up your asphalt for the landscape island in. However, if you have gravel parking right now, there's no reason you can't go put that landscape island in because all you're gonna do is scrape the gravel off and then bring in the topsoil and do the plant. I mean, it would take some work, but not the same level of work as you would if it was paved. So I just added that for clarification because the requirement has been over the last almost 11 years that if you are fixing a site and you're gravel or dirt now, you bring it into compliance if you're paved, you don't. And then the next one deals with what we talked about tonight. Give some more definition as to what a blank facade is because it didn't have a definition of the code. So because this is the only place that applies, I inserted it in this particular section to, to what that actually means. Because the one tonight, you could say, well, I have doors on it, but they're the metal doors with the doorknobs on the outside, they're flat doors. So they really don't change the look that it's not like. And then I have a few little skinny windows up at the top, so I have windows, so that counts. Not really, that's not what the intent of what a blank facade is versus an architectally designed facade. So this is just adding some clarification. It can certainly be amended. This was just from research on the code as to kind of the typical definition of what that means. Tom, if there's any comments about that one? It's, like I said, it's just more identifying what that means. And then the next one has to do with the inspection. We already talked about that one. That's the one that says if you have a landscape architect, you're required to have one. And they have to go inspect it and certify it to the city that it's good and it complies. If you did it yourself, the city will go out there and do the inspection and let you know what's division. So that, that's the change there. And then maintenance, that's just some grammatical wording at the bottom of the page. And then the next page. Again, the suggestion was to insert grassy areas, call it lawn and landscape areas. So we incorporated that, added screen and buffering. A lot of this is just cleanup. Same with the landscape later. It's just adding a reason for why you do a pre-app and it gives some more clarification up above. Nothing changes the content there. Same with, on page 31, these are just adding words for clarification. Violations at the bottom just does that reference to the other section of the code. Then page 33 will be the next change. That's where we add some definitions. The only one I did not have to find was ground cover. That's something I did today. And what I found online that deals with landscaping is that it's a material used around plantings within a prescribed landscape planting bed. And there'd be a note in grants or something, but this definition... friends or something, that this definition is only for the purposes of landscaping requirements in chapter sixteen thirty-three. So this would go in the normal definition section of the code, but it would be specifically called out to mean, this is only when you're talking about landscaping requirements, in case there's another meaning for ground cover somewhere else. Then adding the definition of what lawn is, perennial flower, the native vegetation existing, and the landscape vegetation existing, um, because those are requirements and references in the code. And then at the bottom of that page, when this was amended in seventeen, there was a landscape chapter, and then there was a little bit of landscaping stuck in the parking, and unfortunately, when that revision went through and we adopted the new landscape code, this section wasn't stricken out of the parking section, so this is just the cleanup, stressing it out, um, because if no one replies, then it's just a deal. And that's it.
And so we're going to bring this up.
Can't we strike the whole sixteen two four dash oh four?
Which one?
Wouldn't we start, wouldn't we, since there's no minimum standards, wouldn't we strike everything?
No, no, there are standards, one, two, and three, I just didn't put them in there. I only showed you four that has to do with landscaping.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the other has to do with how many parking spaces.
Yeah, when I looked at it, it had the other three.
Okay. Gotcha, I understand.
So there's two options, so nothing scheduled, only if we do a more work session next month, and then adopt it in October, or we can put it for public hearing, and if you guys have any amendments or tweaks that you want, now that you've seen it, we've talked about it, you want to propose it, we can go forward with the September public hearing. It's either way. As far as I know, no one's chomping at the bit that says they have to have this right away, but I don't know if a private go home, do you?
Well, I'm just waiting to write a ticket up on Mr. Green.
Grand, grandfathered him.
No, you can't, because there's another violation, and it has nothing to do with these changes, so. Please try to get your ticket back.
Uh, let's, let's move it forward to, uh, to a public hearing, so that maybe we can get some people that will come in and, and talk to it.
Yeah.
And then that way, we can send it up to the council, and, and depending what happens, they can kick back to us or, or accept it.
And like I said, with the exception of the eighteen twenty-four for shrubs, and requiring the ten-foot trees and eight-foot trees along the perimeter, this pretty much incorporates all the suggestions we received today. Okay, so really, uh, just so you, you understand, that incorporates the suggestions that we've received over the whatever year, nine months we've been working on this.
This wasn't just you?
Yes, it was all me. No, it wasn't, it was Karen. She wrote it all.
So, uh, we're good with this, guys, coming to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. How many, um.
When is our next meeting?
September.
I'm going to be out of, I'm going to be out of town.
You have a calendar right there, so it's the second Tuesday.
Yeah, September, September fourteenth.
September fourteenth, so it's the second Tuesday.
Yeah.
Will you be gone then?
I, we, I may not be here, yeah.
Can you call in?
Huh?
Are you able to call in?
Uh, maybe on a sat phone.
Oh, no. So he's saying he's not going to be here either.
Oh, well then, so we should take it to October.
Yeah.
Well, if you're not here, we can have a meeting.
Or just move it to the fourth Tuesday.
If Commissioner Sage L. can't participate by fall.
I won't be here, I won't be here on the fourth Tuesday.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be in.
You couldn't have that meeting, because we wouldn't have a forum.
No, I know that, but I was saying move it to the fourth Tuesday instead of the second.
But I won't be here.
But Bushnell won't be here, so.
Well, this, shoot for October, I got nothing planned then.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's October twelfth.
Yeah, I think that'll work. Might even get more time to put more public notice out for it.
Yeah, so what about the third Tuesday?
The twenty-first?
Is that, is everybody available then, or?
It's possible.
I may not be back.
Yeah.
Okay.
September's.
So we can cancel that one in September.
Do we have any?
Only reason we would want to try and find a date is if we had a private permit for the conditional use.
Yeah.
I don't have anybody in the works to hear if you're recalling, I don't think we have anybody, I think we've just brought through the last drag list for the season. Um, so the deadline is this Friday, it's all known by Friday.
Okay.
So is it, if there's no petition scheduled, we will not have a meeting in September, and we'll schedule this for adoption, I don't know.
I think that works.
Well, go ahead and post it online, so if anybody's interested, wants to see what it is, they can have that draft.
Yeah, that, that it would have more time for the public to look at it, too.
To review and comment, the commissioners would have more time if you saw any other minor tweaks or changes.
So before we exit committee of the whole, how many, um, VBRO applications have we gotten? One, all that work and one? One, one official? One official, okay.
It's not approved yet, but it's in the works.
All right, I would, uh, like, uh, see a motion to exit committee of the whole.
Make a motion to exit committee of the whole.
Uh, say, Mrs. Commissioner Sage L. has motioned it.
And Commissioner Seals seconds.
And is there any objections? Hearing none, we exit commission, uh, committee of the whole at eight fifty-five. All right.
All righty.
Uh, hopefully everybody reviewed the communications and the packet, any comments? Nope, okay. Um, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to make any public testimony? Nope. Staff comments?
Uh-oh.
So, uh, just wanted to let you know, we are having a booth at the state fair this year, and we're encouraging all council members, and you're all welcome to sign up for a two-hour shift to, uh, better engage the public. We've got, uh, four or five slots available, so now is your time to talk about shrubs and ours. And we have a nice parking permit and a grant tree to prepare that day.
I'll check my, uh, my calendar, I'm, I'm, think I'm already going like three times, so I will check my calendar, and see what, see what those, if they match up.
Yeah, I'll let you know, I may be able to.
I know.
I know a couple of council people have signed up for a couple shifts through, uh, and, uh, the government's going to take a day and share what they're doing, and, yeah, get out of trouble.
Okay.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll add, my mic died, I'm so sorry, I talk too much, I'm sorry, um, is, I think I mentioned that we added a new code compliance officer, who's doing a great job, he's really excited learning the ropes, wants to understand the codes and doing that, so probably in the next month or so, you'll start seeing a law come in for code compliance issues that have to do with zoning, which is helpful to the commission in understanding what are these triggers that are common hits among commercial businesses, and should you therefore amend the code, or are they appropriate and these people should just come into compliance? So that's something you do not have for about seven years, so I think that would be helpful moving forward with coaching, just.
Okay.
So, hopeful and see that.
All right. Mr. Schwartz, you still with us?
I am still with you.
Hope we've been good?
Thank you, nothing from me.
Okay, so we must have been good.
You were good, too.
All right. Commissioner Sage L., any comments for this evening?
No.
No comments at this time.
Ms. Tira?
I have lots, but I won't say any.
I have nothing further to say, so we are dismissed at eight fifty-eight.
Perfect.